Okay, we are ready to continue on with the meeting.
Okay, and I apologize, could you guys, I wanted to touch base on the affordability question, but I believe there was another question when my audio was paused.
Let's, why don't we get your answer to the affordability question? Because I think that you started saying something and it got garbled.
No worries. So as far as affordability, it is the number one issue for residents, myself and my family included. You know, last year, we, I specifically presented our leadership with an affordability package that I wanted to kind of pursue. That affordability package turned out into an affordability working group that eventually the Assembly also adopted. And our package was very, very focused in workforce development, energy, because the cost of energy is significantly high, as well as, of course, my bill SB 681. And the issue of affordability is an issue that will continuously be there. I think that that is one of the biggest concerns. My additional concerns as the economy changes, as we are seeing some of the impacts, it's not just playing defense and, you know, backfilling a lot of the funding cuts, but it's also the unemployment that we are seeing within our tech companies, especially in our industries of advanced manufacturing, semiconductors, and, you know, much more in the tech industry. They are far more nimble than most other industries in our retail. And that is why I highlighted also the World Cup, because it is an opportunity that most cities should grab on to, to kind of promote some of the revenue being generated by the local economies. So with that, I think many of our bills and efforts, again, focus on the most vulnerable community members. I gave you guys some stats on who that tends to be, and it is communities of color, it's our senior population, it's women, and it's college-going kids and much more. So I think that that will always be a concern and the lens that we see pretty much any other person's policy that comes before us as well.
All right, thank you. And what I was saying before, our technology so rudely failed us. California is a substantial net contributor to the federal budget. We send in considerably more in taxes than we receive back in federal funding, and that has been dramatically exacerbated over the past year, beginning with the denial of fire relief for LA County, and continuing with the draconian cuts in HR1. Governor Newsom has adopted a somewhat pugnacious stance on this, which I appreciate, but what can the state do to fight back and ensure that our residents are, you know, receiving our fair share of what we put into the federal budget?
Wow, that's a softball.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Member, I'll just say that, you know, the way in which we fund our taxes is everyone pays them individually, and so there's no, there's no practical way to withhold federal funding. But the best way that the legislature has responded to that is we disagree with the president where we believe we disagree with him, and we direct our Department of Justice through our Attorney General Ron Bonta to sue the federal government where we feel unlawful decisions are being made. We have won, and the state of California has won two-thirds of those court cases against the federal government. So by and large, the money that we are investing in paying the Department of Justice, we are saving hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, by defending the existing money that should be appropriated that Congress via the Constitution has given to the state of California, and we will continue to support the Justice Department. But let me underline, we'll not be using our legal system because we disagree or don't like the president. We can do that in the ballot box, we can do that in the midterm elections, we can do that in this past election, but disagreeing with the president is not what our constituents want us to fight with him about, primarily it is if you are breaking the law. And if, we believe that they have, and we will take that matter up lawfully through our democratic process of the court system, which we've been able to do and defend Californians two-thirds of the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that was all of council questions. Senator Dr. Wahab, Assemblymember Aaron Saj, I just want to thank you for presenting to council tonight, giving, you know, giving updates on all the hard work that you've done for Sunnyvale in the district, and, you know, all the good things that you'll be doing in Sacramento in the upcoming year, so I appreciate that. And we will be moving to oral communications after this. Hopefully someone from your staff will stay around to at least, there's a few people that want to comment on the presentation, but you can always watch, watch the recording afterwards as long as our technology is working. But thank you, thank you for being here, and thank.
Happy belated birthday yesterday to our mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember.
Sorry, Mayor, before we continue on our communications, let me just state that while we're having some challenges, Zoom is having a worldwide challenge at the moment that we are getting to experience. We do have local recordings of everything that is transpiring tonight, so we will have that posted online after the fact, so it will, it'll incorporate all of our glitches, as well as everything that was said as we thought we were broadcasting. So just for the record, we will have everything recorded and available tomorrow.
Thank you, City Clerk. And with that, we will move to oral communications. This is now the public's opportunity to address council on topics not listed on tonight's agenda or the presentation. This section is limited to 15 minutes, may be extended or continued. After a general business section of the meeting, individuals may only speak once during this section. This city council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means that council can regulate time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within council's authority, which is known as council's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker comments are outside of council's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule that speaker out of order. This allows council to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and protects the rights of other speakers. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Please submit a speaker card to the City Clerk, raise your digital hand now, or dial star nine noon telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. First up is Charlene L., followed by Jin Z.
Go ahead.
Yeah, tonight, instead of talking about policy, I'd like to share with you a personal story. I have two daughters who are the love of my life. Raising them has been my most enlightening and fulfilling endeavor. When my children were young, eight and 10 years old, we went backpacking in the Sierras for the first time in their lives. And the Alpine wilderness made it a surprising thing. They freely roamed around laughing and exploring as children are meant to do. Their behavior was surprising to me because back in Sunnyvale, they were afraid to leave my side. I realized then that in Sunnyvale, they were scared of cars, and rightly so. Because of how dangerous the roads were, I had to bike with my children to school every day until they reached fifth grade. I also had to bike with them to the North Adonis, music lessons, friends' houses, library stores, basically everywhere until they were well into high school. I spent 20 years biking by their side, teaching them how to avoid a car crash on the streets of Sunnyvale. If this roads had buffered non-door zone bike lanes like Hollenbeck Option 1, my children could have biked independently at a much earlier age. I could have saved myself a lot of time also, so that I could focus on running the household and earning a living as a research engineer. Note that unbuffered door zone bike lanes like Hollenbeck Option 2 would not have liberated my children. I would not have let my children bike on those alone. Indeed, as an adult, I avoid the Option 2 style bike lanes on Mary Avenue whenever I can. Our dangerous streets have caused another profound misfortune. For many years, living in Sunnyvale, I used to not know my neighbors, except the ones right next door. Then realizing about that neighborhood is a place to make human connections, I made a concerted effort to know them. Biking was instrumental in my quest to know them. When I bike, I invariably have chance encounters with them. Yet despite having lived here for 23 years and making this concerted effort, I still don't know most of them, even the ones just two doors down. If I see these neighbors at all, I see them only when they come out to get in their cars to drive off. It's so fleeting that I wouldn't even recognize them if I were to come face to face with them. They are car-bound because they think it's the only way to get around, focusing on driving, to get around safely. Focusing on driving leads to dangerous roads and isolation. Biking makes our roads safer and brings us together. To make our community into the council priorities vision of an engaged and welcoming community, we have to make biking possible for all ages and abilities. On Hollenbeck, it means choosing Option 1. Take it from me, a woman who biked with her children for 20 years in Sunnyvale, it would not let, I, children might go bike by themselves in Option 2 bike lanes. Option 1 is the only option. Please choose community and freedom over parking. Please choose Option 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Jin Z, followed by Steve S.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jimmy Ling, and I'm a regular patron of Sunnyvale Public Library. For months, I reported repeated violation of policy A11, including a patron regularly inside the technology center. But on August 27th, staff abruptly stopped documenting violations, even though under surveillance. Reverse practice followed just a day before. I immediately escalated the sudden change to the superintendent, ceasing the city manager's office on August 27th, and again to this council on September 11th. Substantial responses were received, and the city contacted for evidence or statements. Because the city declined to review any evidence, I independently collect 22, 22 civilians captured violations, just a fraction of what occurred daily. The predictable consequences of this non-enforcement follow. On September 22nd, the repeatedly offending patron threatened me, documenting in Public Safety Record Number 25266097. On November 14th, another patron threatened me as well. On this day, to, sorry, to this day, no investigation has been completed, and the city has contacted me for evidence or statement, despite prior notice of all these violations, threats, and one missed report. These instances occurred because the city stopped enforcing its policy and stopped documenting violations. I respectfully ask this council to ensure full enforcement of Policy A11 and A12, required confrontation and review any internal rules that prevent. I place this on the public record for the protection of myself and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Steve S., followed by Tiffany H.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have a presentation up here. Wanted to talk to, bring you an update of something that I started independently a few months ago since July. There, I've been doing independent surveys on Hollenbeck, and I'm bringing you six more additional ones to the ones that I had before. It's interesting to notice that service vehicles outnumber bicycles in the latest six that we have here. These are the earlier surveys we had. So the main thing is to show that on various days and various times a day, whether sometimes there's soccer at Challenger, sometimes there's an event over at Resurrection Church or Sunnyvale Presbyterian, that there's quite a variety of the uses of, of the on-street parking. And I know we have Option 1 and two different Option 2s, A and B, and an Option 3 that we're looking at in two weeks. Here's something else that might be interesting to you. On November 5th, a Wednesday, 11:50 a.m., there was a large event. I don't really know what it was, it might have been a funeral or something else, but these are three different pictures of the traffic. There were probably about 35 extra vehicles on the two sides of Hollenbeck, and there were approximately 30 vehicles down on Cascade, both east and west on Cascade, that were extra and not residences. I live near that area there. For what you're coming up with in two weeks, I'd like to propose a new option for you to consider, a 2C. We heard recently a bicycle aficionado talked about two features that have been included in the very expensive pricing estimate of $5 million on some of these options, 1, 2A, 2B. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that he agreed with me, that there are some of those features that don't need to be removed. Bicycles can transition through them, and they are so valuable to the community that we should consider keeping them. The 2C, in a simple sense, is it's 2B with three primary changes. You retain the pork chop and slip lanes at Fremont and Hollenbeck, you retain the left turns at Torrington, and you address the crossing needs, specifically Cheyenne, Sheraton, and Harvard first, and there might be one or two additional ones. This greatly lowers the cost, very significantly. The bicycles, I've looked at the pork chops we have there are pretty easy to get around, you don't have to go through anything on that. So please consider this 2C between now and two weeks from now, and you may be able to save a lot of our money.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinger, you have a question?
Yes, for staff. Mr. City Manager, my understanding is that in general, we have been in the process of removing pork chop turn lanes in the city for some years now. I know that they were removed at Matilda and Maud and a variety of other intersections. Is that an ongoing practice or priority, or do we have a policy on that? Or perhaps Mr. Taylor might speak to that.
Yes, I'll turn that over to Chip Taylor.
Thank you, Chip Taylor, Public Works Director, it wasn't expected a question, so I. Yeah, so with the, with the pork chop islands and removing those throughout the city, we do try to work through the city and remove those as far as it's a practice through the Vision Zero Plan, through the Active Transportation Plan, to provide better crossing for pedestrians, so they don't have to cross that uncontrolled movement for the right turns. So as we work through the Active Transportation Plan or other projects, that's when we try to remove those.
Understood. How long have we been doing that, out of curiosity?
Oh, gosh, that's a good question. I think mostly I've been doing it over the last maybe 15 years slowly, but, you know, really ramping up maybe over the last 10, five to 10 years, you see a lot more throughout cities. It's pretty common.
No further questions.
Thank you. Next up is Tiffany H., followed by Jignesh S.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, thank you for your time and consideration. I'm a resident on Hollenbeck Avenue. The slide deck that you see provides a richer description of the people who make up the community on Hollenbeck Avenue. There's been a lot of discussion and advocacy from both sides, and it has evolved into one side versus the selfish, privileged, and entitled homeowners who cannot care less about anyone else's needs. These are the common sentiments that I've found online that are hateful and divisive, not community building. Let's be clear, disagreement is not hate. The Hollenbeck Bike Lane Study provided an opportunity to understand that the corridor is made up of segments with different characteristics, each with diverse uses and needs. Let's take a step back to look more closely at the community who actually live on and regularly use our street. These are the people who may take a survey or write a letter, but they aren't going to attend a council session for a variety of reasons. And for the purpose of this presentation, it's hard to see, so I want us to think of the term "high-density housing" to generally refer to apartments, condos, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. If you look at the map and the graphic, you'll see Hollenbeck horizontally with Danforth on the left and Remington to the right. Most of the street is single-family residences, but we haven't taken time to look at the high-density housing that's just off of the map to the left or north of Danforth here. Two apartment complexes on the northeast corner of Hollenbeck and Danforth, and lots of multi-unit housing. The small yellow box is a community care facility that specializes in caring for adults with autism. They are all on the east side of Hollenbeck. Staff's proposal with new parking on which these neighbors rely. Next slide, please. Cumberland Elementary, you've already heard about. The school district has made great efforts to relieve the stress for families by offering to bus students to school. There remains high-on-street parking usage, particularly in the mornings for those who want to avoid the barbed traffic of getting to school via Danforth Avenue. Speeding and red light running continue to be a brake safety concern at this intersection. Next slide, please. And lastly, there are nine triplexes immediately north of our study corridor on Hollenbeck Avenue, where there's already no on-street parking and a bike lane currently exists. None of these neighbors I spoke with know about the bike lane study. One person who works in a restaurant and lives in the apartments gets one parking spot, but by 8:00 p.m. that spot is taken. Another shared that their location does not have on-street parking in front of his triplex due to the bike lane and already walks five to seven minutes to park. If parking was removed, the biggest concern was when this would happen and if it is time for him, for them to find a new place to live. Obviously, the parking provisions for high-density housing are currently insufficient. Let's not be a city that forces these community members who work as restaurant workers, mechanics, P.E. teachers, and electricians away. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinger, raise your hand. Okay, no problem. Jignesh S., followed by Zachary K.
Hi, my name is Jignesh, and I live on Hollenbeck as well, close to Remington. And just continue on Tiffany's presentation. So I have two kids who are in college now and once passed college, and both of them used the bicycles to bicycle down Mary to Homestead. And they said they would continue to do so even if there was a bike lane on Hollenbeck because Mary's much safer. Continuing on the presentation, so between Sheraton and Cascade, there's high-density housing businesses and community users. I think this was mentioned before by Steve as well. The Challenger pickup and drop-off is the most impactful for traffic flow. Off-street parking at churches and mortuary is insufficient for weddings and funerals or holidays, and off-street parking at Challenger Park is insufficient for Sunnyvale Alliance and AYSO practices and games, and that's multiple times a week. And. Coming to the Challenger community, right? So 10 years ago, Challenger listened to its neighbors and changed its policy regarding pickup and drop-off in order to, you know, make sure that the, that the parking situation, the traffic situation was eased. And they listened to it and really helped. And now we are trying to do something else, which is just going to take all this away. Not sure why we're doing that without listening to the, listening to the neighborhood. And what, what, what will this lead to is just another Chick-fil-A or In-N-Out type of situation on Hollenbeck, especially during school hours? There are soccer games, families already park along Hollenbeck between Torrington and Fremont, and also along Torrington and Vanderbilt. They even park in front of the Fire Hydrant. This is from one of the neighbors. What we need is crosswalks at Torrington and Vanderbilt. And then, in addition to that, there are, oh, sorry. There are single-family homes, there are many, many people who are above 60 years old, right? Had we listened to them, pulling a car out of the driveway is already quite hard as it is. What will be the impact be on these people? You know, the older you get, the harder it gets to drive, and also the services and all that, that need to be rendered to them, whether it's for home repair or for other, it gets harder and harder. One of the residents who's, who's elderly said, "What do you propose for those of us who are dependent on walkers or wheelchairs? Do, do not count, and I've waited to confinement rather than freedom. Yes, I'm old, but not quite to the point of confinement yet." Right? So let's make sure that we, we, we address the needs of everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Jignesh, was that right?
Yes, that's right.
You mentioned something at the beginning of your comments that you, your children mentioned that if, if bike lanes were installed on Hollenbeck, they would still prefer to bicycle on Mary, is that accurate?
Absolutely.
Did they give any reason why?
Yes, because, primarily because of the situation at Challenger. So while, while you're biking, and first of all, Mary is much wider, they said. And my, my son was, was biking every day all four years, and even on weekends because of sports, right? And so he said, "Mary is significantly safer. You can get to Mary from where we live through, you know, Nickaboka or other streets to Mary, and then, and all the high school students take Mary anyway." Right? So there's safety in numbers for bicyclists, for the students, and they would all, all go on Mary together. And so just, that, and that's the feedback, met him in Atlanta this past weekend and asked him this.
Wonderful, that's very helpful, and, you know, I certainly would encourage them to write in. And I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Susan S., followed by Zachary K.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Let's just finish this up here. Where were we? There we go. You know, these accessibility concerns need to be addressed, not minimized, dismissed, and fail to understand the difficulties. And there's a term for that, and it's called ableism. And by not really listening to people who have accessibility issues, that's what we're trying to do. We also don't need to hear this anymore. I mean, this is a quote from somebody in social media. "I don't really want to be here that I'm, you know, exploiting social welfare." Our community really needs safety and accessibility, independent of whatever decision council makes. No matter what, we really feel strongly about traffic calming along this corridor. It just, it, everything is foundational upon that. We really need to address the accessibility issues for those who are not mobile anymore. And even though it sounds like a nitpicky pain in the rear-end problem, how are we supposed to maintain our homes? We don't understand how this is supposed to happen. We really don't. People in social media say it's being done in other places. How do they do it? Is it the same situation as ours or different? Because I think this Hollenbeck issue is more complex in some ways because of all of the public-use areas, especially between Fremont and the Dales. So we do want safety for all. Please stop the name-calling. We really need empathy and understanding in order to get to a good solution set. We need to reach across the aisle. Since we want safety and accessibility for all, there's three major choices that have been evaluated, the sharrows, which I understand is not really safer, Class 2 nonbuffored, Class 2 buffered with no parking on either side. Unfortunately, none of those meet NACDO standards for safer bicycling infrastructure. Maybe we should be investing more on really safe infrastructure instead of band-aiding things together. And the rest of this is, if we talk about the nonbuffored bike lanes on the east side, the scope should be expanded to include more pedestrian crosswalks, having those things monitor, I can't think of the right word, but you know what I'm getting at. Because more people are going to be crossing the street. It's that simple. And again, codify things for non-resident stopping, people, handicapped people, trades and traffic calming. And if we go with the buffered bike lane thing, it's more of the same with the calming and all that sort of stuff. But
Thank you very much.
The environmental impact report due to Challenger.
Thank you. Zachary K., followed by Marius R.
Assemblymember Aaron's. I read that Assemblymember Greg Hart, a non supporter of S B seventy-nine, was absent for the S B seventy-nine Appropriations Committee vote. Well, not a no, his absent meant one additional N V R, no vote recorded. S B seventy-nine wouldn't have advanced to the Assembly floor. Assembly Speaker Rivas, however, decided to replace, or perhaps better phrasing, filling in Hart with you. Your yes vote raised the tally to eight, enabling the bill to advance and its ultimate passage into law. Some mystical L A Times story was cited. I wanted to give you a chance to clear that version thing of that version of things up. Going with that narrative, your installation on the committee meant that the S B seventy-nine bill got clear of the legislature. This is all secondhand to me. Can we hear from you on these events? I would like to point out, I turned on my speaker card for the prior agenda item. You chose to put my speaker card last. Success. Assemblymember Assemblymember Aaron's just left.
Next up is Marius R., followed by Anne H.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Marius Rovd. I'm appointed as the new Executive Director of Sunnyvale Alliance Soccer Club. It's hopefully not my members who has this bad parking you're talking about, but I know it's some of them. I want to present myself. We are the largest non-for-profit sports organization in Sunnyvale. A quick update on my background, I was a professional soccer player at the highest level in Norway, Scotland, England. I coached and directed soccer in four continents and more than 30 countries. I have coached in three World Cups. I spent 10 years as a coach and a director in Major League Soccer. And I have the highest coaching education available in the world and a master in sports directorship from London. This is not to brag, but we want to build something in Sunnyvale for the community. For nearly eight years, I've served as the Executive Director in Vancouver, Canada. And I've had the two years in Bloomington, Minnesota. Both cities, the clubs allowed double their membership and activity within a couple of years. That growth didn't happen by accident. It happened because we built programs that were inclusive, community-focused and centered on access for all families, regardless of financial background. In Richmond, B C, our club became the first ever to win back-to-back Association of the Year and Leadership of the Year awards at the Chamber of Commerce. It was because of our community outreach programs and we created programs for underrepresented families, indigenous youth, Ukrainian, Afghani refugees. And we worked with organizations such as Voices of Muslim Women. We made a big diverse program. The same commitment is here now in Sunnyvale. Every year, Sunnyvale Alliance provides close to $500,000 in scholarship and financial aid. Far more than probably the 10 neighbor soccer clubs you have in other cities. No child is turned away because of finances. And I want to expand this even further because this is how you build healthy, resilient, inclusive communities. And that's what I'm doing. But with growth comes demand and we will have to look at field situations for our members. We will soon be 4,000 soccer players. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next up is Anne H., followed by Alak B.
Hey, good evening. Thank you so much for for taking comments. I'm going to focus only on Holland Beck Option One bike lanes. I just want to list what I see as the pros and cons. Full disclosure, I am a resident. I do have two children who bike to school every day. The pros, I think, are very clear. Bicyclists will feel safer and they will have a more enjoyable ride. That is what I, that is my understanding. The cons, even Option One does not meet NACTO standards for safety based on the staff report that we have up to 13,500 vehicles per day on Holland Beck. So if Holland Beck feels safer and it's not, there is a risk of bikers who are less experienced, kids deciding, hey, this is safe enough to bike on when it is not. It's just a feeling. Currently, the only traffic calming on Holland Beck are parked cars. So if you take those parked cars away, I expect speeds will increase. Promises of traffic calming later are not the same as proven traffic calming in place when those changes are made. The most common type of bicycle accident on Holland Beck is a broadside. That is not improved with bike lanes, but it is indicative of a speed issue. And so that's really what needs to be addressed with traffic calming. Also, we will be adding pedestrians to the mix. Pedestrians are very important too, in addition to bikers. We want to keep them in mind for safety. So please keep in mind that we also need improved crossings regardless of what option, if any, we go with on Holland Beck. So in summary, I would propose the following. Please follow up with traffic calming on Holland Beck. I understand that's separate from this study and I understand we are following up. Following up and I greatly appreciate that. Slower traffic makes everybody safer. Second, improved crossings at Holland Beck, including Cheyenne, which is where I see a lot of bikers crossing between the Nimitz neighborhood and over toward the Sarah Park area to get to C M S and Homestead. Three, if bikers aren't happy with Sunnyvale-Saratoga, which I get, it's also not NACTO-approved. Or Mary, please use the city resources to address that. Those are wider streets. They have more options. Sunnyvale-Saratoga doesn't have residential driveways every few feet. There are more options to make safe bike passages on those streets. So let's fix what we have instead of creating another broken option that bikers don't want to use. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Alak B., followed by Kevin J.
My name is Alak. I am a resident on Holland Beck Avenue for almost four years now. I want to invite our mayor and council members near Challenger School between seven thirty in the morning and eight thirty to see the traffic, how it gets backed up. While I'm dropping my two kids to Challenger, which is literally point two miles away from where I live. And it takes me 10 minutes because I'm in queue and I have a restricted window to drop my daughter at seven forty-five in the morning and my son at eight fifteen in the morning. It is a single lane towards Homestead, but we are sharing this lane. So for for people who want to drop their kids to get in Challenger and from the other side, people are moving towards Homestead. Implementing bike lane on that street will only create a lot of chaos, which is already chaotic because it's a very restricted space to get in school. And the same situation happens when we have to pick up our kids starting from two forty-five till three thirty. And there is a soccer practice and there are parking situations already on Holland Beck Avenue because of A Y S O and some other events that are going on. So we have raised this issue during data collection when when this was, when this started in March. Many, many times we reached out, we sent pictures, we sent event information, but please consider these data points that were neglected in original data collection study for Holland Beck bike lane implementation. Next one is, I'm also here on behalf of my 84-year-old neighbor. He's an old, he's a Navy veteran. His wife is 81. Both have mobility issues. They are not tech savvy. However, they have returned to you and all council members via U S P S. They have called and unfortunately, they have not heard back from anyone. They are supported by medical assistance. They are supported by their veteran friends continuously. We help a lot, especially with with anything that is needed with other day I was literally assembling a chair that that his daughter shipped via Amazon. The the biggest problem that they have is if the if they if their visitors are not able to find parking, the closest parking for for that house is point five mile away. If they are not able to find parking, their only option is to sell the house and move on. This segment this segment of population has been completely neglected despite they have reached out to our mayor and to council member. And please, please consider, given there are residents on this street who has been staying here for more than 30, 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, and my last speaker card is Kevin J.
Oh, I go by Kay Jackson. Good evening. I'm a nearly 50-year resident of Sunnyvale. And one of the things I appreciate most about it is that our government consistently takes the long-term view. It just makes things work better overall. And I'm hoping you will do that for the Homestead bike lane or the Holland Beck bike lane issue. And I'd like to make sure you're aware of an aspect that I have not seen previously addressed. That is the explosive growth of e-bikes and similar devices. This should be a positive development to replace many automobile trips. But that works only if we plan our bike facilities to meet the need. Otherwise, it will become a constant source of dangerous conflict due to the overwhelming of minimal bike facilities and the increased speed disparities between e-bikes and human-powered cyclists. Alternative one is a very good start and it also preserves options for further improvement as they become necessary. By contrast, alternatives two A and two B would be a disaster. They are barely minimal adequate for the conditions of yesterday. We need to be building for the conditions of tomorrow. I'll take this opportunity to respond to a recurring concern that's been expressed about what happens if we need service vehicles and there there's no street parking. Well, that's very simple. Every cyclist who rides regularly on streets without parking knows that if necessary, service vehicles park in the bike lane. And the police don't bother them. It's a made-up issue. I think the Public Safety Chief could probably confirm that. Nonetheless, it is safer to have it marked as a bike lane with no parking for several reasons. First, the service vehicle operators will look for a legal space if there is one. If they can't, then they park in the bike lane if that's what they need to do. But they will turn on their hazard flashers, put out orange cones, take similar measures to alert all traffic that extra caution is required. And third, they'll get in and out as quickly as possible rather than hanging around for a break if they don't have to go on another call right away. So all these things help and it's something that I hope you'll consider. Thank you.
That was my last speaker card in the room. City Clerk, do we have any remote speakers wishing to speak under oral communications or the presentation?
Yes, Mayor. First is Lakshmi, followed by Ari F. Lakshmi, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity. Hello, Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor and all the council members. I'm a resident of Holland Beck Avenue for the last four-plus years. Safety concerns is something which I'd like to bring forward. So eliminating the street parking would force residents, including families with elderly members like my neighbors and young children, as well as visitors, to walk much farther to reach their cars, particularly at night or during bad or inclement weather. We've noticed this over the past few weeks when we've had rains. I fell once during the rain on the on the curbs. We do, we do not have very good curbs, broken curbs. These increase a lot of risk of accidents and personal safety incidents every single day. With parking shifted to side streets, more people will cross Holland Beck on foot, raising the pedestrian safety concerns. What measures will the city implement to address increased pedestrian crossings and manage traffic speed and flow? The cyclists often travel at high speeds and neighbors have reported near misses when fast-moving bikes cross driveways unexpectedly, and this is a real safety concern for drivers and pedestrians alike. The core safety issue is speeding and not parked cars. Speeding is directly tied to safety risks and should not be considered separately from this discussion. If safety is the main reason for this proposal, why is the focus on removing parking rather than addressing the speed brought in here? Even the project team's own studies cite speed as a major factor. Finally, the service workers such as delivery drivers, gardeners, home care aides, how to park farther away, increasing the risk of injury as they carry heavy items and cross baby streets. Mainly, I would like to say that this is an unfair burden on residents, undue burden on those who rely on street parking, prioritizing the needs of cyclists over those of residents who live and contribute to the community. Prioritizing new bike lanes on Holland Beck while leaving the existing issues on nearby roads like Mary and Sunnyvale-Saratoga unaddressed is not an effective approach. Creating new problems without solving current ones do not serve the community very well. There are prone alternatives that can enhance bike safety without eliminating essential residential parking. Improving the design and maintenance of existing bike lanes on nearby streets, making them safer and more attractive for cyclists is one such thing. Implementing better signage and wayfinding to alert both drivers and cyclists to share a road and use could could reduce potential hazards. Adopting traffic calming measures such as speed harms, chicane, traffic circles, lane narrowing and medians to effectively reduce vehicle speeds and improve safety of all users without removing parking. So the city should reconsider this proposal and instead pursue alternative solutions that improve bike safety while preserving the essential parking needs of our neighborhood. The proposed removal of the street parking on Holland Beck will negatively affect safety, daily convenience, property value and quality of life for all the residents. The city should consider these significant impacts and address the real safety issues. Thank you.
Next up is Ari F., followed by Rupa. Ari, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Hello, City Council. The city is planning to grow in population. To prevent future congestion and improve the lifestyles of all of our residents, we need safe and convenient non-automobile options to get around. This means building a network of low-stress bicycle routes. Holland Beck is a key part of that network. The only design that will be safe for all ages and abilities is Option One. Option One's buffered bike lanes will provide safe biking for children. Children should be able to bike safely to Challenger, to the library, to church, to Homestead High School and so many other places. Having children take alternative routes is not acceptable. Mary Avenue and Sunnyvale-Saratoga have too high of a crash rate. It's unacceptable. And taking those detours will add a mile to the route. If you think walking a few minutes to a parked car is hard, try biking on a high-speed road with a small child. Adding buffered bike lanes will make Holland Beck the safest north-south, north-south street in Sunnyvale, in South Sunnyvale for biking. I want to take a moment to address some safety concerns. First, Option One will bring us the closest to meeting the NACNO bike guidelines. We should not let the perfect be the enemy of good. Even if we don't meet the NACNO guidelines with this project, doing this project and specifically doing Option One will get us there because it gives us the ability to upgrade this facility in the future to Class Four Protected Bike Lines. Next, Option One is best for traffic calming. Parked cars are not a legitimate or safe traffic calming measure. They are not consistently placed and they are not continuous. But traffic calming will work. There are four types of eligible traffic calming devices for Sunnyvale's traffic calming program. There are traffic circles and chicanes, which unfortunately do not work on Hollandback, uh, due to Hollandback's geometry and vehicle volumes. But curb extensions and chicanes can work on Hollandback. But they only work if there is a buffer in the street to place these traffic calming devices. Option one is the only option that has a buffer. Option one is the only option that allows you to implement curb extensions and chicanes across the entire length of Hollandback, resulting in lower speeds everywhere. Additionally, option one can lead to protected bike lanes. This can take the form of delineators, which just cost around forty bucks a pop. You place them once every twenty or forty feet and you have reduced vehicle speeds more than any traffic calming option. Again, option one is how we slow speeds on Hollandback, which is something we can all get behind. Finally, option one will eliminate blind spots for drivers by eliminating the parked cars on the road. This means Hollandback will be safer to cross for pedestrians.
Thank you.
Next up is Rupa, followed by Stephen M. Rupa, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Uh, good evening, uh, dear council members, uh, mayor and vice mayor. And thank you for this opportunity and your attention. As a resident of Sunnyvale, I have one question to ask. Has the city gathered any data from any other similar street in Sunnyvale which already has bike lanes? And, uh, compared the data in terms of safety usage throughout the day, the street width, the traffic volume, the speed, and the conditions? Please compare and consider this data with Hollandback, with the existing conditions in Hollandback before you decide to spend a few million uh, dollars here, which I'm sure the city can put to good use. Given the width of Hollandback, why can we not consider measures like sharing the lane between the cars and bikers, which will automatically get the speed down and be of good use to everybody? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Stephen M. Stephen, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for your attention tonight. So I have been able to bike on Hollandback several times. I'm a big pickleball player and I've been riding from Fairbury down Hollandback towards Cupertino Memorial Park. And I can attest that while I'm biking, there are very few cars, but the cars that I encounter are often in the wrong place that I'm pushed into traffic and then I have traffic going at high speeds making me quite uncomfortable. And I'm an expert bicyclist. And what we're targeting with the active transportation plan is the eighty-fifth percentile mother who would like their cyclist to ride to school. So we need traffic facilities that afford people the greatest amount of safety, and that would be option one. And if option one's too far to reach and you're not quite sure, then the prototype of just doing a bike lane and possibly with delimiters would be able to tell you what would really happen. And I do agree with all the residents' concerns about safety and speed. Uh, speed is a big problem on Hollandback, no doubt. And that's why we need traffic calming to take place. But traffic calming is, you know, apparently a back, big backlog. And then the, the actual facilities we have for traffic calming are things like bulbs outs and improved intersections. And I think everyone I've heard agrees on improved intersections and agrees on traffic calming. So the only, you know, points of difference might be with regard to parking. Any regards, I think I would like to repeat the quote, "Perfect is the enemy of good." Option one is exceptionally good. So we should do what's good and then move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the final remote public speaker for oral communications.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close oral communications. Um, let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess and come back at nine, ten. Thank you. Let's go ahead and reconvene. Uh, move on to our consent calendar. I'll open up the public comment on our consent calendar items. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk, raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participant speakers. We'll have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards on consent. Um, city clerk, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on consent?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for a motion. Vice Mayor Sel.
Um, I would like to move to approve consent calendar item one A to one H.
Thank you, council member Chang.
Second.
Thank you, city clerk. Can you please conduct the vote? Sorry, can you please conduct the voice vote?
Yes, since we have, whenever we have at least one council member participating remotely, we need to conduct uh, roll call votes, uh, per the Brown Act. First up, Mayor Klein, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Srinivasan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sel.
Yes.
Councilmember Chang.
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger.
Yes.
The motion carries five zero with council members Cisneros and Lay absent.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now move on to a study session, item twenty-five dash zero six three five. Um, active transportation plan progress and reporting update. Is there a staff report?
Yes, uh, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. I, I wanted to introduce this item. Um, the agenda title is, is, uh, we were struggling with it a little bit, but they, uh, I want to explain a little bit about it, the intent tonight. The intent is, uh, one of council's priorities was, uh, is active transportation. And, um, as part of that, um, we added a position to the budget, uh, for an active transportation planner. And so part of our goal tonight is to just introduce you to Jose, who's here tonight. Um, and, and Chip Taylor will do a little bit more of a robust introduction. And then also, he's going to share some work, uh, that Public Works has been doing on, on progress reporting is what we're, we're talking about. So the actual, um, he's going to show you a little bit of, uh, uh, information that's going to go live on the website sometime in the near future. Um, that'll give some updates and progress on, um, implementation of the active transportation plan. The intent of this presentation is not to provide you an update on the status of the act, implementation of the active transportation plan. Um, I would encourage council, if you want to get a, a recent update on that, um, BPAC received an update, um, on that item on August twenty-first, and so of this year. And so if anybody wants to see the update, the staff report is, uh, there's the YouTube video and also there's a, uh, a presentation on, online that you can see, um, there for, for an update. Um, so with that, I'm, I'm very excited about this. We're, we're trying to make some really good positive progress in this area. Um, really bring more transparency and information sharing about our progress on active transportation. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chip Taylor.
Hey, thank you, Tim. Chip Taylor, Public Works Director. I'll use a line from Good Will Hunting. He stole my line, yeah, because he stole most of what I was going to say. Um, but if we go to the presentation, we can go to the, um, the first, um, slide or second slide, I guess, on there. So, yeah, as Tim talked about, we, um, you know, this was a budget proposal to add the active transportation planner. Um, and it originally was sponsored by BPAC back in twenty-three. And then it was adopted in the budget as part of the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Um, and so Jose's been with us for maybe about six months or so, maybe around that timeframe, pretty close. Um, and, uh, when Jose first came on board, he kind of asked, well, what is it that this position is going to be? What's it going to do? And I said, well, a lot of it, you get to define it. You get to be the first person in this position and really help us kind of push the boundary and really kind of push us as engineers and, uh, the whole department to really work toward how do we incorporate a lot of these things into everyday projects? Uh, so we've given a lot of latitude to do that, um, which is great. And one of the first assignments that we gave him was to look into, um, how do we start to get information out to the public about the active transportation plan? So that's what you hear about tonight. Um, and then the next slide, um, you know, and maybe I'll let even Jose talk a little bit about himself here. Um, but, uh, essentially, he's got some great background, uh, from kind of the engineering side. Um, and he's got, um, uh, some great background with Palo Alto and working on active transportation planning there. So, um, with that, I will hand it over to Jose here just a second. One thing I will say is, this is supposed to be a great night tonight. We actually have a really cool mapping tool that's going to be here. So that's what we wanted to do. It's the first time that Jose is going to be in front of everybody here. So, you know, don't, don't beat him up too badly. Um, but, uh, but we're excited and I think it's going to be a great tool. So with that, I will hand it over to Jose.
Hey, thanks, Chip. Uh, hello, everybody. Um, so, uh, about myself, um, just really quickly as well. I'm somebody who bikes every day when I come into Sunnyvale. I take Caltrain from San Francisco and I bike here every day and I make sure I do that every day. So people can know that I'm also a bicycle user and I'm somebody who really challenged myself to, to change that habit. Um, also, my professional background, as Chip was mentioning, has been involved with co-managing the St. Francis School Program with the city of Palo Alto. Uh, and on top of that, I've also worked with various consulting firms, uh, engineering and planning. And also, just like I was saying, some interest has always been to sort of be the person who's showing as well that I'm using those other modes of transportation that I talk about is something critical to me. And that also involved my, uh, certification as a, uh, league cycling instructor, which basically means that, you know, I can teach people about biking, but also I've become a resource on, you know, bike riding questions that people might have. And I feel very confident in exchanging those ideas and resources with people. All right. So, um, moving into the goals for this study session, um, you know, as we were saying, you know, the active transportation planner, um, it, that's me, sorry. And also, we're moving into the AT progress reporting. So, you know, we're going to be showing you an online map. That's part of what Chip was saying and we're going to be sharing, um, sort of a list of some things and also giving you a tutorial of that map as well. I'll be doing that myself and then sharing the next steps, uh, after that. So we'll go into the planned progress and reporting. So we'll go into the planned progress and reporting. So as it's been five years already since the plan was adopted, and BPAC and the public expressed this interest of showcasing more data and understanding where we are in implementing the ATP plan. And, you know, staff and myself, we looked at various cities and what type of way that they are sort of keeping track of this progress. And we decided to focus on an online map. And so I'm gonna go up to the front here and start navigating a little bit of what that looks like. So be patient with me.
We were going to get some Las Vegas magic, kind of, you know, fire or whatnot to show it off, but that didn't work out so well with the fire district.
Yeah, okay. So as you could see, we have a, where is the?
And this is a live tool right now, so we may have experienced a little bit of technical issues.
David, oh, there it is. Okay, so you could see here, four tabs at the top. And the first thing I wanted to explain on the left side is just a legend. And each tab on the top here will have a legend on its side, helping you understand what you're looking at and how to use this tool, at least what you're looking for, and sort of navigate you on how to, you know, understand the progress of this map. So the first tab is called Bike Ways Before 2020. It's just letting you know before the ATP was adopted, we have a map here of existing bike facilities that have been there, including our Class One, Class Two, Two B, Three and Four. So, and we just have some other layers in here, including just public school boundaries that exist within Sunnyvale and the city of Sunnyvale's city boundary as well. Moving on, again, this is based off the ATP plan. And just so everybody knows, this is a beta version and we're working on it and we'll continue to improve on it. And I'll emphasize a little bit more on that later. But this map essentially is showing all the items that have been at least adopted or that will be built by the ATP plan. And so it's showing you as a whole, all those proposed projects. And also, we're aware here that it says a double of Class Four. But I just wanted you to know that we have various, again, the shared use paths and that being on this map as well. And just showing you where projects are going to be implemented as we move along. The next tab is just all the bike lanes that, or sorry, all the bike facilities that have been implemented recently. But also you'll see gray on here. That is just an indicator down here that it is the bike ways built before 2020. So people know that there are bike facilities that exist, but we wanted to highlight what is, have been built. So for example, down here, you can see some of the Class One shared use paths. And you can also see some of the buffered bicycle lanes. But just note that this is a, still work in progress. We're trying to put this together, but essentially you'll be able to navigate this on knowing what's been implemented. The next tab is the statistics, and this is still, again, a work in progress. And you'll see sort of the statistic information that lets you know, you know, for example, here, total miles of new bike ways since 2020. So again, and now I'm going to go back to the slide over here. All right. Yeah. Okay. All right. So the next steps. So as you can see there, as I was saying before, this is still a work in progress. And what I'm essentially trying to do here is, you know, let you know like what's happening next, including we want to add another tab that just talks about sort of where projects are at. For example, where the planning phase is, where the design phase and the construction phase, and people will be able to navigate the map and click and know where that is and where it's located and more information. On top of that, we're also looking to include also the pedestrian part and also the safe routes to school improvements. And there will also be tabs that will be included as we continue to work on this map. We will also be expanding information, including for the statistics part on bike facility and by type as well of how many miles are being installed. Again, and to emphasize, it's just a living, it's a living document and we'll continue to work on it and to improve it as, as much as possible. And yes, thank you very much.
And I'll add just a little bit, you know, this is a tool that the group in transportation was a little uncomfortable putting this out just yet because they thought that they wanted to really get it perfect, right? They wanted to get it perfect. And I I said, let's, let's go and get it out in beta. Let's get it out and try it out and let people see it. There will be some errors in here. There will be some things that look odd, and we're working to fix all of those and add to it. And the goal is to keep adding to this regularly. I mean, we're just going to keep adding features and adding a lot of ability to click on certain things and then go to information, you know, show the plans or go to the website or whatever it might be. So a lot of good, solid plans going forward to make this really even a much, much more robust, robust tool over time. So hopefully you like it and we're open, obviously, to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. First up is Vice Mayor Sel.
Well, I wanted to thank Public Works and all staff that contribute to bringing you on board. You have a tremendous background. So thank you for coming to Sunnyvale. You come from a rich background of biking in terms of coming from Palo Alto. My understanding is a lot more students bike in Palo Alto than in Sunnyvale. I was just wondering, like, have you, like, at a high level, do you see some things that might be low hanging fruit to try to improve the people wanting to bike more, increasing biking or anything that you see as low hanging fruit that that's what we're going to do first? Or is your approach like build a really strong foundation? And what is your over like arching, like plan or strategy, like high level, really high level?
I'll chime in just real quick and then I'll let Jose talk about his, his perspective on that. But I'm Angelo Bezo, Transportation and Traffic Manager. When, as, as Chip had mentioned, when we brought Jose on board, we were, we were kind of, you know, we had a lot of visions, but we were looking to him to see, okay, where do you think we can make progress? And one of the things that was really important to us is all the feedback that we'd heard from the community about what is the status of the ATP? What is, what have you been building? And so that was one of the priorities that, that we, the department, put on Jose from the get-go is start dreaming about, start researching how we can do this in, in a very clear, publicly facing way. And he, he's, he's humble and talks about the team, but he, he came up with a lot of these ideas. He worked very closely with our IT team to develop this, and he's still got lots of more ideas. So to go back to your question about the low hanging fruit, I'm sure that he's got some ideas about that. You know, he's already, he jumped in from day one. He ran this last year's Bike to Work Day. He did helmet fittings at Bike to Work Day. And so he's got lots of experience with his, with his LCI, his, his training and all of that. And I don't know, Jose, if you have anything else you want to add about other trainings or educational opportunities?
I, I would say that personally for me, that's why I bike to and from work. So people know that, at least city staff as well, bikes. And I think that is an example to people that, oh, okay. At least I know that they're also riding the roads of the city and have that experience as well. So I think that is sort of maybe not the low hanging fruit that maybe you want to hear, but it's, I think, a great way for people to know. I think another example is like, when I go out to the field, I really try hard not to take a city vehicle. I'll go ride my bike to a location in order to ensure that I'm also, you know, contributing to lowering the amount of vehicles that are on the road. So I'm trying to change that perspective internally, but also showing it to the city as a whole to, to understand that we're trying as well.
And I'll add just a little bit. One of the things that Jose wanted to do is to start to get more integrated with the schools themselves and actually start meeting. And so that's kind of like our, our next step, you know, because we do have some of our, you know, kind of bicycle coordination that occurs within our public safety group as well. And so we've been working with that and Jose's been working with them. So that's kind of some of the next steps is to start getting integrated into the school, start learning more about them. As, at the same time, he'll be helping us to try to find funding for implementing our ATP around schools and our safe routes to school plans to get the infrastructure in place while he's working on kind of the, the social aspect and, and the schools themselves. So that's going to be some other pieces that'll go forward. And that's one of the things that Jose wanted to do as soon as possible.
Okay, well, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I also work closely with the Safe Routes to School Coordinator on ensuring that we continue to improve the Safe Routes to School program.
Well, you've made a lot of progress in the short time you've been here. So thank you very much and keep going.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much, Jose, for a great presentation. It's great having you onboard staff. First thing I want to say, Mr. Taylor, you made the right call showing us this early. I'm going to speak as a UI and a front-end software engineer now. It is always, always, always better to get the early unfinished product in front of your users fast so that you can get the feedback instead of showing it to them when you're all done and them saying, wait, what? So thank you for doing this. I very much appreciate you doing this. And I, my message to staff is I'm always eager to see work in progress early. I think that that's a great thing to be doing. In that spirit, could we get the map on the screen, please, or the, the beta?
And we'll be making it live on the website very soon.
Excellent. Okay, so the first thing I'm going to say is this is great. However, the active transportation plan also includes the safe routes to school and the pedestrian improvements. And, you know, something I have heard a lot from the community is the sense that pedestrian improvements sometimes don't get quite the emphasis that they deserve. And so one piece of feedback I have on this is I'd love to see sections included on here. I'm not going to say how. But something on here about safe routes to school, about the various SRTS improvements, you know, that are in the, you know, maybe something like, hey, see the SRTS plan for your school and get a little mini version of this as to what's been implemented and what hasn't. I know that's that's, that's a V two, I'm sure. But so, but having the SRTS stuff there, even in static form, would be great.
And I would, I would say that, that, that is on the roadmap. That was something that Jose is right on target. So you're right, right on there.
Excellent, excellent. Something I will add on this is as we look at this, some features that I think would be valuable. We've got old bike ways, proposed bike ways, new bike ways, split out into three separate tabs. There is a, in the ATP, I don't remember which slide it is, but there is a slide that puts the proposed and the existing bike lanes together on the same map. And being able to see all three on the same map, which I know could get noisy, but there are visual ways that you can do it in terms of color desaturation and dashed lines and so forth, would be really helpful to sort of show what was the network then, what is the network now, what is the network going to be, right?
Yeah, I, I was going to comment that we did have a section that we're still kind of finalizing, but we didn't show today, but it does show where you can toggle but what, exactly what you were saying, where we can see overlay and we could see where things were all in a glance, right? And then where things are going. So, yeah.
Something else, you might already be able to do this. I see you've got overlays for public schools. That's great. Something that you might, you know, being able to click on the legend and see just the Class Twos, just the Class Fours, et cetera. So filtering.
Yes, and I think, you know, in regards to ADA as well, that's something that I think about when I'm putting these maps together and making sure these maps are accessible to everyone. Exactly what you're talking about is something that I'm thinking about as well. But for this version, we, you just wanted to show you that, but I'm, I'm glad that you're bringing that up.
Absolutely. And like I said, I'm thrilled to see this early. I'm doing the UI engineer thing. And I will say, I do not envy whoever has to do the accessibility work on this. That is very important and I, that's, that's always challenging. Last couple of things, I do want to ask about a couple of items in the ATP, if that's okay, Mr. City Manager? And I'm not, I know that the primary point, I'm not going to go into too much depth on this. But I did want to ask about bicycle signage and bicycle, and for that matter, pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signage that is called out in the active transportation plan. Cupertino, Mountain View, Palo Alto, all have really nice bicycle wayfinding systems. We still really don't. We have the numbered routes, which are confusing at best. Is there a timeframe on when we're going to be looking at bicycle wayfinding standards and starting to get bicycle, you know, improved bicycle wayfinding signage installed?
So I think I'll take that question. There is not, short answer. We are looking overall at the entire ATP, the higher priority items in all three sections, bicycle, pedestrian and safe routes to school. And we're trying to identify grant and funding opportunities that are ideal, ideal for those projects to move the higher priority things first. And so, but if we find a grant, we've got a handful of staff on the transportation team that are researching grant opportunities, Jose being one of them. And if there is an opportunity that wayfinding signage would be ideal for, we would go after it and, and try to implement it that way. But as of right now, there is not a schedule. In addition, similar to the striping changes that we've been implementing throughout the city, if there is a project happening somewhere where wayfinding signage is, is a possibility for implementation, we have been working with all of our other teams to get that incorporated in their projects so that things get done sooner.
Do we have wayfinding signage standards? Or can we incorporate them from another agency, for that matter?
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to look and see if we actually have an old standard for that. We might, because there has been some projects a long time ago that were done for bicycle wayfinding. So I'd have to check. But certainly it wouldn't be, it would be fairly straightforward to adopt something, depending on if we wanted to go, you know, deeper into like a branded sign and whatnot, that might take a little bit more, if it's not just a standard type sign.
Okay. I know Google installed some bicycle wayfinding signage, or at least I think they did up in Moffett Park. Am I misremembering that, Mr. Mayor?
I don't remember seeing any.
I seem to recall they were talking about it at the very least as part of their.
Installed some like on their private portion and not on the public portion, but you know, so maybe a little bit of that.
I'd also like to add in that, that we've been coordinating with VTA and VTA is looking into wayfinding signage standards for the county. And so we're, we're working with them to see, you know, if they have some guidance that we can, we can tag on along if we want to incorporate. So there are efforts going on in the background.
Okay, excellent. I'd love to get an update offline on that. And yeah, I think, I think wayfinding signage is actually super important for bicycle and pedestrian accessibility. The last thing I wanted to ask is, you know, in terms of the bike lanes that we've installed, we've only, my understanding is we've only installed a bit more than a mile of Class Four bike lanes. And there's something like eighteen, nineteen called out in the active transportation plan. You know, we did, we, we've at least cleared the, the street sweeper hurdle at this point. When can we expect to start seeing more Class Fours going in?
So as, as I think you're all aware, we, we recently got some budget approvals for the street sweeping, you know, maintaining those facilities was a big concern of ours. And so now we have a plan for that. And so we're looking for opportunities to incorporate those. As of right now, we don't have any specific locations planned, but as we move forward with projects, we're looking at if a Class Four makes sense. And, and if so, then we include it in our recommendations.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Srinivasan.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome aboard, Jose. By the way, Mr. Taylor, Good Will Hunting is my favorite movie, so. But anyway, Councilmember Mellinger asked about pedestrian. That was one of the questions I had, comments I had. One of the, I am working with high school students. One of the projects we are looking at is mapping the public arts in Sunnyvale. So these are pedestrian walkable public art locations. So any way to map that, what are the gaps or something like that of pedestrians crossings and other things would be useful. You also mentioned that multimode transportation option. Another student group is working on VTA project for Sunnyvale, Northern Sunnyvale students to come to Fremont High and Homestead High. So what we have done is map the VTA bus route on the map. So that that's another layer you can lay on top of that. That would give us the, not only the safe route to school, but also safe option, public option to go to school. Those are my comments for now, but this is a really very, very good exercise. I also like the toggle of the layering and layering on top of that. I'm I have seen that many, many times in my experience. But this is a good beta proof of concept, very, very good one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Chang.
Thank you and welcome, Jose. Echoing the similar comments, I did also want to say I'm really excited about you working with the schools. And if there can be a separate, I don't know if this might be the right tool, but updates on how those projects are going when you do work with Safe Routes to School. You know, any of the programs or things that you're working on, where sidewalks improvement, for example, you know, once, once it's funded and then if there's kind of updates or pictures that that might be posted somewhere. And my other comment is I do would like to see the filtering. I know that you have mentioned it. I would, for example, want to filter out class three bike lanes. Just I don't want to see them and then so I could see which ones might be better for me if I want to go a certain route. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I just want to say thank you for for being here. You know, it's, it was a lot of effort to, you know, add that from from a staffing standpoint. And I do think that conceivably this, you know, gives a different direction. And and so I appreciate your perspective and and, you know, giving us this preview to a certain degree before it goes live. I do think that there's a lot of value in in the sooner you get test people realizing that, you know, as we saw in tonight's meeting, things go wrong. And, you know, it's whether or not that's software or whatever the case is. But but, you know, definitely being able to map this out, being able to get better views from an ATP standpoint. Just as a, just as a general request or comment, the update to the ATP and how that plan is, let's, can you tell me what the kind of the overall staff goals for that ATP update are? And, you know, when it starts, when when it completes and how that goes?
I just updated ATP in general or about, yeah. So, you know, as far as I go, that's something that that we are working on is how do we do, you know, whether it's an annual kind of update of kind of here's what's going on or whatnot. So I think that's something that we're trying to figure out the best way so that it's useful and can be digested in some way. But Angela, you might have some other thoughts.
Yeah, so so what we've been doing to date is giving BPAC an annual update. And so that is, that is always available. We, to Chip's point, we've been talking about the the most appropriate way to come to council and the larger community. And this mapping tool is, you know, getting Jose on board was a was a huge milestone. And now he's on board working. I think this mapping is going to help. You know, a graphical illustration of information is is very helpful. I would also like to comment, I don't know if if your question was also related to actually updating the document itself. Yeah, so the doc.
Steps, because we're five years in. And so, you know, when do we start looking at that next update?
Right, so we do have plans to, you know, there's no, there's no set date number of years that an ATP should be good for or standard practice. But when we prepared this ATP originally in 2020, we had foreseen about every 10 years that we would update the entire document. So we're we're looking at in near future budgets to start having that conversation about what that effort would cost and look like as far as a CIP budget update year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just remembered that I wanted to raise one thing just for council's awareness. And this extends beyond this particular tool here. But this the city staff is in the process of working through ADA compliance for our website. And specifically with our mapping tools, so that includes development projects and all those kinds of things. We don't have a a solution in place yet for that. But so just heads up, things may change and become a little bit less interactive than we would like in order to make sure they're accessible. So just want to share that little piece of information.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public comment on this specific item. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk, raise your digital hand now or dial starting on the telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on the members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have two minutes to speak. I have two speaker cards in the room. First up is Charlene L., followed by Kevin J.
Hi, thanks for taking my input. Charlene Liu here. First, it's great to see the progress. Thank you, Jose. And it's great to hear about the role so far, which is to push the Active Transportation envelope in the city. And I fully support that. Now, reporting status and educating staff on the bike-related matters is okay, but insufficient for this pushing of the envelope. What we need is for the Active Transportation Planner to review the designs of for safety compliance with NACTO, All Ages and Abilities, and Caltrans Complete Guide, guide, Complete Streets Guidance. We need to formalize this as a role by putting design review by the Active Transportation Planner on the checkoff list. And this is so important because in the past, recent past, we have had things designed and implemented without any public review, specifically the class three bikeways on many school roads, which double center. So cars and bikes have to conflict. And this is just totally inappropriate on such a high-volume road and goes against All Ages and Abilities guidance. And in addition, another example is the bowl bouts, which push the cyclists into the path of the bike, of the cars right at school zones. So again, young people are riding and this is just not good. As far as the map, I'm I'm really happy to see that progress. And I do also think putting in, being able to overlay the completed projects with the projects that have started and those that have not started on the same map is very useful. And the ability to zoom in to intersections to see what is there, as well as also in addition to the map, provide a list of projects. Because we want to be able to do a search of the project we want, and it's hard to do a search on a map. Class four implementation, I don't know why we can't just do it as a quick build, put in delineators right now. We're not waiting for repaving or anything. We can do it now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello again. I am really glad to see this effort moving forward. And I want to emphasize the point about the importance of seeking input from BPAC and the public in the design of transportation projects. One thing you can see if you look at how motor vehicle accommodation is so successful is that everyone involved in the transportation projects, from initial proposal to final implementation, is thoroughly steeped in car culture, providing multiple reality checks at every stage of the process. Unfortunately, this is not true of bicycle facility development. So it's important to get the input of BPAC members and other cyclists who have extensive real-world experience with these facilities. There's always a strong temptation to declare the minimum standards as objectively safe, to leave more space for lower priority uses. When that use is street parking, it creates another extreme hazard intruding from the other side of the bike lane, the deadly door zone. Making sure experienced utility cyclists are an ongoing part of the discussion is the best way to balance that urge for wishful thinking. This will produce facilities that make people feel positive about using a bike for more of their trips and help the city achieve its safety, sustainability, and quality of life goals. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last speaker card in the room. City Clerk, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor. First up is Jonathan B. Jonathan, you've been unmuted and you have two minutes to address the city council.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Blum. I'd like to thank the staff for the ATP report. And I'm very pleased to see our new Active Transportation Planner and his plans for the improved reporting system. I do have one suggestion, and Kevin kind of stole my thunder, but I'll go ahead briefly. Inevitably, some of these projects come out better than others. And I think that one way to help ensure good outcomes is to solicit advice on proposed designs from the BPAC and the public. I think Jose will be a great help in this respect, but he can't know every street in Sunnyvale, at least not yet. Now, I don't fancy myself a civil engineer, although I have learned a lot by listening to them in the last four years. But users provide a perspective that I think can be beneficial even without formal training. If you're going to make a frying pan, it is good to get input from the metallurgist, but also from the chef who is going to use it. Your department is already very skilled at getting feed, public feedback and working with the BPAC. And I think that process could be used here without an undue amount of additional staff time or delays in the projects. I hope you will take this under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the final remote public speaker for this agenda item.
Okay, I'll close public comment, see if there's any final comments from council. Hi, Councilmember Mellinger.
Just a quick question. In general, when it comes to VTA transportation guidelines, NACTO guidelines, review of those projects, that's already done as part of the engineering efforts, correct?
That is correct. We take into account all the various standards, but also the guidelines, best practices, and and what we're seeing other cities implement.
All right, and that's typically a traffic engineer's responsibility, correct?
It, 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 yes. I stumbled because a planner also has some of that expertise and can look at it in in as an engineer. I know that my worldview is engineering, right? But but planners can come at things in a different perspective. And having a planner who's also an avid cyclist is is a great benefit to our team in that he can bring those two perspectives, which may be unique from some of our other perspectives. So a long way to answer that, yes, engineers, that is their jurisdiction and their their role. But the planners also are very familiar with those documents and will will help guide us through that as well.
And that gets to what I was saying earlier about the importance of usability testing and user feedback gathering and getting a perspective from the people who are actually going to be using the facilities. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's all council questions. Thank you, Jose. Thank you for the update. And looking forward to playing around with the with the new software and new website. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, could we have a quick recess?
Absolutely. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess and come back at nine fifty-eight. Thank you. Thank you. The meeting. Let's go ahead and reconvene. Let's go ahead and reconvene, and we'll move on to item 25-0950, Consider Below Market Rate Alternative Compliance Plan for Residential Development at 1124 West El Camino Real. Applicant is Deanza Properties. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm presenting a report for you to consider a below-market rate alternative compliance plan for residential development located at 1124 West El Camino Real. This project was originally approved by the Planning Commission as a mixed-use commercial and residential development comprised of 111 multifamily residential units above retail and structured parking, along with five two-story single-family homes. The project is originally approved by the, by the Planning Commission, was for 111 multifamily residential units to be designated as rental units, and the five single-family homes were designated as ownership units. Since the original planning application for this project was filed and deemed complete prior to the reinstatement of the BMR requirements for rental housing in November 2019, the rental housing portion of this project is grandfathered in with the requirement to provide a housing impact fee pursuant to Municipal Code 19.75 rather than provide onsite units. For the five for-sale ownership units, no BMR units were required since the minimum threshold for BMR ownership units is seven units. Staff has always anticipated the collection of fees for this project rather than onsite units. After the project was approved in 2024, the applicant filed a revised tentative map for condominium purposes to create ownership opportunities for the multifamily units in the main building with the intent to sell 86 of the units and retain the remaining 25 units as rental units. Since the project has changed, the applicant is required to comply with the BMR housing requirements outlined in Municipal Code Chapter 19.67. The 86 condos and five single-family homes are subject to the 15% BMR requirement, which results in 13.65 BMR units. As mentioned earlier, the rental portion of the project is grandfathered in with a requirement to provide a housing impact fee. The Cities Administrative Policy, Chapter 1, General Management, Article 24, Review and Approve an Affordable Housing Alternative Compliance Plan requires that the Housing and Human Services Commission review and make a recommendation to City Council when an alternative compliance option is requested by an applicant. In October 2024, the applicant completed the Affordable Housing Compliance Plan to formally request City Council approval to pay an in-lieu fee rather than provide onsite ownership units. The in-lieu fee is set at 7% of the final sales price and is collected through escrow at the time each unit is sold. The Housing and Human Services Commission heard the side of at its June meeting and made the recommendation to approve to the City Council the applicant's BMR alternative compliance. It's estimated that the housing impact fee for the rental portion of this project is roughly $950,000. The fee amount per square foot is outlined in the city's fee schedule. It's estimated that if approved, the BMR in-lieu fee for the ownership portion of the project would be approximately $16 million, which is subject to change depending on the housing market. Total collected would be close to $17 million. In prior budget cycle, staff has anticipated collection of the rental housing impact fee for this project. Those funds have been earmarked to be used to assist future affordable housing options for extremely low and very low-income households. Losing these funds would have an impact on future funding opportunities. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's alternative compliance plan for the project as shown as Attachment 2 of the report. The rationale behind most alternative compliance options is largely the same, to collect enough in-lieu funds to assist nonprofit developers to provide a greater number of affordable housing units to more households than could have been achieved with standard compliance. Often, these alternatives result in deeper income targets of, targeting of the units serving very low and even extremely low-income households. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Let's bring it to Council questions. First up is Councilmember Melanger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just for the purposes of this item, the five single-family homes are considered a separate project, which are still exempt from the BMR requirement. Is that correct?
No, that's not my understanding. They are one project.
So, would they be rolled in with the units? Okay, so it is, we are rolling in those five homes, is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, great. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shrinivasan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. In-lieu fee, you mentioned that for the sale, it depends on the sale of each item. It's 7% of the item, right? This is the unit sale.
Seven percent of the final sales price that is collected at the close of escrow on each one of the units.
Okay. So, we don't know when the 16 million or whatever the amount will come through it as the sale happens, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. How about the rental? You said 950,000. When will that be collected?
Generally, that could be, would be collected prior to certificate of occupancy for the unit, the units.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good. Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I have several questions. First, you know, from an in-lieu standpoint, and I asked this question in the Monday morning questions, you know, from an in-lieu standpoint, we, we have the requirement or the, the option of the 7% for, at time of closing. That being said, we don't know how long it's going to take for that project to actually be built. And conceivably, at the end of that, the price that the, the value of those homes has gone up, and so we still get that 7%. That being said, there is opportunity loss, that money that could conceivably have gone to affordable housing developers in the interim doesn't get built at a cheaper cost conceivably. And, and so I was wondering from a legal standpoint, you know, this, the way our, our code is written now, we can't require that a portion be paid upfront, conceivably as a, as a, as a benefit to the developer to say, you know, we're giving you this option from an in-lieu fee standpoint, you, a quarter percent, a, a quarter, a third, a half, some percentage, some basically money in, that's paid ahead of time, that will be paid when the final projects go, are sold. Or if this never gets built, we've given them an option that has held up, you know, basically held up our requirements for, from a property standpoint. It's, is there anything from a code standpoint that we could require that? Would that require a change in the ordinance? I'm just trying to get a better concept of how, you know, time is money at the end of the day, and, you know, having some sort of benefit that we've given the in-lieu fee option to them, and in the meantime, can put that money to work in the community as opposed to waiting a decade sometimes for, for projects to actually be built.
Well, I'll defer that question on the legalities to the City Attorney's Office, but I do know that our ordinance is very clear in that it says we would collect it upon the sale of each unit. So I think we would have to make a change to our ordinance to require a developer to provide a, a good faith down payment, let's say, of, of some sort.
Mayor Klein, I want to also add that number of state laws that address impact fees have very specific timing on residential impact fees at the time of occupancy. So, that, that we might not have that opportunity even with alternative compliance. We would be getting the impact fee, though, at the same time that we would be getting a unit. So there's really not really a timing difference from that standpoint. Obviously, it takes time to, to use that funding for another project, but the, the timing is, is otherwise pretty similar.
And to me, it's, it's, I understand developers, and I would love for your staff to double-check on, on whether or not that would actually be a requirement. I understand from a, from a state code standpoint, as we're looking at legislation for 2026, is that, is that an actual requirement? Because, you know, I do think there's value of the in-lieu program. That being said, the longer, you know, the, the amount of time that we wait for a closure of, you know, basically close of sale for those, for those units is longer that we're not conceivably, you know, conceivably funding affordable housing. And, you know, ultimately, it's a credit, it would conceivably be a credit for the final sale of all those units. And even as projects develop, often it's, oh, we do a third of the project and, and open those up, and then later another third, and depending upon the size of the projects and those in-lieu fees. So, so conceivably, you know, we are, we are waiting a long period of time before that last unit closes sale. And I'm just trying, from a city's standpoint selfishly, trying to say we could better have a, a sooner impact from affordable housing and having developers putting that money to use and understanding that the, the, the cost continues to go up.
We're, we're currently working on a review of our below-market rate program. Part of what we're looking at is the percentage. We're also looking at the in-lieu fees, and we can see whether or not we can explore that as part of that study.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate that.
I think, I think City Attorney, Senior Assistant City Attorney has a.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I think the state has different ideas about the payment of development impact fees for most residential projects. So there are many classifications of residential projects where the state has moved in recent years to require that local agencies not mandate their payment until certificate of occupancy. So later in the process, and I think a few years ago, before many of the housing laws changed, cities often, you know, asked for development impact fees earlier in the process of building permit issuance. But we have changed the process to follow the dictates of state law.
Understood, except I look at as an in-lieu fee as more of a contract as opposed to, it's not really, and I'll, I'll let you look at the, what, what the concept of a fee is. That being said, impact fees, transportation, park mitigation, that is a little bit different than in-lieu. We're basically creating a contract to a certain degree to say that, that you don't have to meet the standard code. And, you know, it's, to me, it's almost a development agreement between the, the contractor, the developer, but not for something to be fully discussed here. You know, I'm, I'm looking for options because, you know, not that, you know, not that I'm trying to put more barriers to construction, but there's a timeliness to, to giving this benefit to a developer that we, you know, the city conceivably loses out on that timeliness, and that, and that's the only thing that we could put that money to work. So, okay. And you answered the question about BMR. So definitely, so, so yeah, the 7%, that's currently our in-lieu fee from a BMR standpoint, that's already being evaluated. What's the timely, what's the timeframe for that to come to Council?
We are working with several other cities in the county on this study. So there's a series of reports that would be unique, and we've looked at an administrative draft and have asked for some additional work on it. So it'll be early next year before the draft is available. And then we would probably have a, a conversation with Council before we, we move forward with, with any particular, so perhaps a study session on it. So, early part of next year, February-ish.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Chang.
Thank you. I had a question. Because of the market variability, we weren't actually sure how much is deposited into the housing mitigation funds, and staff said that they could provide updates to the amount of funds collected each fiscal year. I would be interested in seeing that and how much is total in each year as well. On, on Mayor Klein's point, is, I recognize there's, it's not till the certificate of occupancy, but is there an opportunity rather than payment for a zero-interest loan that the developer could pay?
I'm not sure we understood the question, that instead of an in-lieu fee to offer loans to the purchasers.
For the affordable housing project.
The alternative compliance section says, or other alternative compliance that, that's requested and approved, but that hasn't been requested. What's been requested is to, to pay the fee in lieu of providing the units.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. The applicant will be given 10 minutes at the beginning of the public hearing. We'll open up for the general public, and then the, there'll be an additional five minutes for the applicant at the end of the public hearing. Please submit a speaker card to the City Clerk. Raise your digital hand now, or dial a star nine in your telephone and indicate that you wish. I will call on members of public participating in first and first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. First, the applicant.
My name is John Vidovich.
Welcome, John.
Yes, and we have been on this project for maybe five or seven years because we were told to wait for the general plan, and it took a long time, and that's why a lot of these things are grandfathered. We have done this before, and we did it at Pastoria, which is on the corner of Pastoria and El Camino. The units went for more than we expected, and so more money came in, much more money. In this case, this is the, the right thing to do because these units are big and they're not, they're not suitable for BMRs. So, right now, I think housing is growing, and if you stick with us, I'm hoping the sales price goes up, and, you know, as time goes by, you'll get more money. You'll get market rate of money, and you'll get the 7%. The only issue here is we have five units, homes, and those homes were dictated by a policy to buffer single-family homes, and so we have five single-family homes in the back. Those five single-family homes, which are, were a part of a vested tentative map, and so it was less than eight, and I think, you know, all of us had the assumption that those would not have to pay BMRs because it's a regular subdivision, it's less than eight, and it was through a vesting tentative map, and now the map is changing for condominiums, but still, that vested tentative map is not touched there. So, I believe that it's not fair or legal to force this applicant to pay for that five-lot subdivision for single-family homes, which are homes that buffer the existing homes. And they're expensive houses because we put them underground, part of it, so that the neighbors would feel very comfortable, and we have very happy and comfortable neighbors. The project is great. We have a car dealership there, which we are going to hang on to, and as I told the mayor recently, we did not realize that we had to have a whole bunch of car storage and high bays for the cars to be worked on. So, we've had to put another floor underneath, and a tall floor, just so that they can lift the cars and do, do the things that they do underneath the car. That's all the cars now. They lift it up, they have cameras, they even send you the, the camera, what they did to your car, and they have to have those things. So, we want the dealership there. We're kind of stuck with it, but because we're putting all this. We're kind of stuck with it because we're putting all this extra money, but it's good for Sunnyvale. Dealer, dealership, it doesn't impact anything. It's, you know, Santa Clara has it all in Stevens Creek, and you're going to have one there that's going to be there forever, and you'll get a lot of sales tax on cars, which you should get because Sunnyvale, people buy a lot of cars. So I agree with everything, except I don't think it's fair or legal to force me-- it may be popular to do this on the grandstand, but it's, I have a tentative map that's vested, and we all thought that those units, those five units, would not be subject to the 7%. The amount of money would be $14 million 500 instead of $16 million. But it's, that's my opinion on what it is. There's any questions? I'm here. I'm here. The mayor's like pretty aggressive on this thing, but, you know, we have to put up the money first, and it's hard.
Understood.
It's hard. And this project, by the way, I can't phase it because it's one building. It's 110 buildings, 110. So it's like building a high-rise. You have to build the whole thing before you can sell one unit. So thank you very much, and I have a lot of respect for this council. And Sunnyvale, like Sunnyvale, we've been building here, and staff has grown, staff is great. And I'm getting older, so I'm just, you too, Larry, right? Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you, John. There are no questions currently. So I will remind the public, please turn in your comment card to the city clerk, raise your digital hand now, or dial *99 on your telephone, indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards in the room. City clerk, are there any remote speakers wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. The applicant has an additional five minutes if they want to speak.
I just want to say that I don't think it's right to have the 7% on the vested tentative map on the five lots in the back, just so it's clear.
Thank you very much. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for questions or a motion. Councilmember Melinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The applicant raised legal concerns about the five homes, the five single-family homes. I'd like staff to respond to that. And my opinion is that we should follow the law as it is written, and I do not know if that means the five single-family homes should be included or not. And I would greatly appreciate, perhaps from the city attorney or Director Ryan, some guidance on that.
I'll take the first stab at responding to your comment. The question of the prior tentative map before the revised tentative map only came up to me moments before tonight's public hearing. So my opinion right now is not well-researched. I saw that the new tentative map was a revised project and that there were now more units. I did bring it to the attention of Assistant, Senior Assistant City Attorney, and I don't know if she's completed her thoughts on it. If the council is comfortable with the alternative compliance and wants to give us direction to complete that analysis, we could make that determination if you wanted to delegate that to staff.
Does the city attorney have any comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before I respond, I'd like to say that, so I just heard about it even more recently than Director Ryan, this issue, because my understanding was that this item had gone to the Housing and Human Services Commission, and the report stated that those five single-family homes were included as part of the total number of ownership units for purposes of the inclusionary requirement and therefore the calculation of the in-lu fee. So as the item was heard by your advisory commission, they considered the five single-family homes to be included, and this issue or dispute was not raised until this evening. So we don't have the revised vesting tentative map before you. My understanding is that it's a revised vesting tentative map, and so the map is, which includes the five single-family homes. And what is vested through the approval of a vesting tentative map are the ordinances, policies, and standards that are in place at that time. So those standards, the laws have not changed, we're not applying new laws. So I have not been able to look at it or even look at the vesting tentative map this evening. But I don't, the Subdivision Map Act does not specifically state that in this scenario that those five units that were part of the prior vesting tentative map would be excused from being counted towards the total number of units for purposes of the calculation of the fee and the inclusionary requirement. I'd also note that the staff report to the Housing and Human Services Commission said that the project went to the Planning Commission in August of 2024, and then in October of 2024, the alternative compliance application was filed. So it seemed that it was very close in time where it was known that there would be many more ownership units than the five that appeared to fall under the threshold for the inclusionary requirement.
So let me jump in, if I may, Mr. Melinger. Would it be, so, not to presuppose what motion is available tonight, but if council has the want to allow the compliance, the BMR alternative compliance plan, based upon attachment to, with that being said, leaving it to staff to find the city's legal stance on, is it 86 or 91 units after this date? Is that something that legally we can do? Or do we need to make that resolution tonight, that decision tonight? Do you understand my question?
Yes, I understand your question to be, can you approve the alternative compliance of payment of the housing in lufy rather than providing the inclusionary units subject to staff's determination of the, whether that calculation should be based on--
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six or 91.
Correct.
I think you could make that determination.
Thank you. I hope that helps. Councilmember Melinger.
That does help because that was, this is far beyond my expertise to be able to evaluate, and I am happy to leave that question to staff. I will be ready with a motion, but I think there's another hand up.
There, are there any more questions? I see no other questions. So--
Okay, so what I am going to, let me find the alternative. I move alternative, I believe this is alternative two? One, this is alternative one?
Yeah. Okay. Well, it's alternative two with modifications, so--
Yes, so the modifications, it's alternative two, which is the staff recommendation with the direction to staff to identify whether the basis for the in-lu fee should be 86 or 91 units.
Thank you. Councilmember Shreeni Vasan.
Second.
To your motion.
First, Madam City Attorney, does that motion pass muster? Is that motion satisfactory?
Councilmember, alternatives two says, is approve the staff recommendation, approve the alternative compliance request with modifications? Is that--
Correct. The modification being staff to identify whether it's 86 or 91 units that it should be based on.
Yes, so approve the alternative compliance request for payment of a housing in lufy. Is that right? Housing in lufy, with a determination of the calculation of the fee, whether it should be based on 86 or 91 units as determined by staff.
I'm not seeing, okay, I'm not seeing any objection from staff? Great. To my motion, this fee is, whether it is 86 or 91 units, this will add a very substantial amount to our Affordable Housing Fund. There is always a serious and desperate need for affordable housing in this region. As staff has noted, fun, in-lu fees like this can be used to support deeper levels of affordability than many other affordable housing projects are able to do. And as the applicant pointed out, the project as designed is not terribly suitable for inclusionary BMR units. I think that this is, I think that this is going to be a great project for the city. I think that the additional funds in our Affordable Housing Fund will be very well-needed and will go a long way, and I respectfully urge my colleagues, I vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Shreeni Vasan.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Melinger's point. I also feel that this in-lu fee will help the city to build more affordable housing at different levels, which might be the right way to handle a lot of our affordable issues at the different levels. But anyway, sorry, I am blanking out, I'm tired now. But anyway, I also support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sal.
I want to thank the developer for staying here tonight and presenting your argument so well and being cooperative. And so this is a wonderful development. It's actually in my district, and I think the way that you've built it so that there's houses near the residential, that's very thoughtful of you. And to keep like the retail, that's very thoughtful of you. And in this economic time, to be building the housing. So I just wanted to thank you for your partnership with the community to bring this project to fruition. So thank you very much. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you to the applicant for continuing to invest in our city and, you know, ultimately as far as the utilization of the site, a mixture of commercial as well as housing, you know, making sure that we continue to get those sales tax dollars is always critical from a city's standpoint. And having, you know, new for-sale housing, especially condos, which we're not seeing a lot of in the city, I think is very viable. I'm hoping, you know, staff will work out, is it 86 or 91 units? But that's beyond, you know, what we are here to talk about tonight. It's allowing, you know, allowing that creation from the utilization of in-lu fees for those BMR units, which I think is positive from a city's standpoint. We ultimately create, you know, fund those affordable housing developments within the city, utilizing housing mitigation fees, or in this case, in-lu fees. And so trying to create and continue our efforts as a pro-housing city. So happy to support this alternative. And with that, city clerk, can you please conduct the voice vote?
First up, Mayor Klein, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmembers Shreeni Vasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Melinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Chang?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0 with councilmembers Cisneros and Lee absent.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thanks for staying. Our next item is item 25-1046. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Sarah Johnson Reyes, Assistant City Manager and Interim HR Director. The item before you is the approval of the Public Safety Managers Association, or PSMA's Successor Memorandum of Understanding. So PSMA's current MOU expires on December 31 of this year. The city and the association have been in negotiations since July and reached a tentative agreement in October. The association gave notice that their members ratified that tentative agreement on October 22, and so it's now coming to council for approval. High-level summary, the focus during this cycle of negotiations was internal equity, following a similar approach to recent updates to the Public Safety Officers Association MOU. And this MOU also supports recruitment and retention efforts for the city. The staff report includes a more detailed summarized outline of all the significant items that are updated in the MOU, which will run for a three-year term with a possible extension for a fourth year. The fiscal impacts of the agreement have been considered, and as outlined in the staff report, will be incorporated into the fiscal year '26-'27 budget. Staff recommends approval of this successor MOU, as well as the associated resolutions, which update the city's pay schedule and update the CalPERS contract to eliminate employer-paid member contributions to classic members' retirement benefits for this bargaining unit. Those are part of the MOU provisions. This concludes the staff report. I want to thank Human Resources Manager Michelle Alberg for being available online. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Seeing none. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk, raise your digital hand now, or dial *99 on your telephone, indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards in the room. City clerk, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it to council for a motion. Vice Mayor Sal.
I move with alternative one. Shall I read it?
Yes.
Authorize city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sunnyvale and the Public Safety Managers Association and adopt Resolution 1, amending the city's salary resolution and schedule of pay to increase salaries for a pay plan, Category M, public safety captains and public safety deputy chiefs. And 2, for pay and reporting the value of employer-paid member contributions to California public employees' retirement system for employees of Public Safety Managers Association.
Thank you, Councilmember Melinger.
Second.
To your motion.
So our public safety staff is highly qualified, and we have competitive salaries for them, and we do exhaustive search in comparing them to other jurisdictions. So we are able to come up with a very fair, but very competitive compensation package and went to, yeah. So I hope my colleagues support this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll be supporting this motion. I just want to thank city staff for the negotiations with the PSMA. You know, to me, it's a smaller group than some of our bargaining units, but this is also, this is one of the critical groups from providing a management team to our public safety officers and making sure that we have officers that want to move up in the ranks and take that leadership position. So fairly compensating them, and I think this does a good job of that, is appreciated. And so I just want to thank staff for doing those negotiations and coming up with a plan that both parties are feeling positive about. So thank you for that. And with that, city clerk, can you please conduct the voice vote?
First up, Mayor Klein, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Chang?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero with councilmembers Cisneros and Lee absent.
Thank you. Our next item is item twenty-five dash zero-nine-two-nine, introduction of an ordinance to renew the franchise agreement granted to Air Products Corporation, Air Products and Chemicals, Inc., for the distribution of nitrogen gas within the city of Sunnyvale. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Councilor Chip Taylor, Public Works Director, was able to sneak home real quick. I wasn't sure if you were making this far in the agenda tonight, but I'm here. I'll make this a kind of a painless item, I hope, tonight. So this is the introduction of ordinance related to the franchise agreement for nitrogen distribution. And next slide. And so a little bit of background that was in the RTC as well is that, you know, nitrogen is an inert gas, right? So it's not flammable or anything like that. It's used in a lot of packaging, manufacturing, even in things like potato chips. You know, instead of oxygen, they put nitrogen in there to kind of make sure that it doesn't oxidize over time. The current franchise agreement goes all the way back to nineteen seventy-eight. So these kind of a series of pipes that have been in the ground that go to various businesses have been all the way since back then, at least some of them. It's been amended several times over the years to either add time and in some cases, changing the name of the company a little bit as they had changed their name. The current agreement is fifteen years and old, and so it expires this December thirty-first. And they had, Air Products Company had requested an extension of that agreement for another fifteen years. And the current revenue from it is approximately forty thousand dollars. Next slide. So we looked at, just to kind of conduct at least a survey of other jurisdictions and what they charge for something like this. It's not overly common, but it's not, but it is around as well. There's not really a consistent methodology to charge for this. And so we looked at the various rates, and ultimately, we were trying to basically remain competitive so that we were ensuring that we definitely had the opportunity for businesses to have access to this nitrogen if they wanted to be in the city of Sunnyvale, but at the same time, trying to maximize the revenue associated with this agreement. And so ultimately, we are recommending a rate that's consistent with a couple of other cities in our area. It tends, it is the highest rate that we were able to find in the area, but again, it is consistent. And it would make the rates or the annual income about a hundred thousand dollars a year. So even though it's a large percentage increase, it's not necessarily a large dollar increase for that franchise agreement. Next slide. And so finally, alternatives, as you've seen in the packet, is, you know, to introduce this ordinance tonight, either or not introduce it, or direct us to go back and negotiate something different. And so with that, the staff recommendation would be to introduce the ordinance. And we think it's something that we were able to come to some agreement with, and it looks to maximize that revenue as well as remain competitive in that field there. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? First up is councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will admit that this is curiosity more than anything. I did not even know we had a nitrogen gas network until I looked at the agenda for this night's meet, this evening's meeting. Do we know when this, who built this and when? I'm going to assume this had something to do with Lockheed coming to town in the fifties?
You know, I'm not sure that it was, actually. There, it was, it was actually in nineteen seventy-eight is when the first agreement that we found related to this. And so it was with essentially the same company, Air Products Company, that was doing this. And it goes to a lot of, you know, small manufacturing, small research and development buildings, you know, things like that that they use for either some sort of manufacturing or some sort of packaging that they use. But, and it's just kind of in that area. So I don't know that it's specific to that. It goes back to that.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, councilmember. Next up is councilmember Shrinivasan.
Thank you, Mayor. Who maintains this network?
The company would. So the company that we're in, we would be in the agreement with, they would be responsible for maintaining it.
Okay. So they have been maintaining this for this long?
Yeah, I mean, with pipes in the ground, it's pretty straightforward in the sense that there's not necessarily a lot of maintenance. You know, they monitor the pressures associated with it. And it does go to other cities in the area, so it's not just here. It does connect in some other areas. And so they monitor and they maintain those to make sure they're in good shape. But that's something they'd be responsible for.
Yeah, the good thing is nitrogen is inert, as you said. So even if there is a leak, we won't. But where is the input coming from? Where are they getting the nitrogen from?
I don't think it's actually an input into the pipe network in Sunnyvale. I think it's in another area, but I don't know exactly where it is and where it connects to that. But it's, I don't believe it's in Sunnyvale. I think it comes from another city where they actually insert the nitrogen into the pipes.
So this is for our own area?
Yeah, I mean, just for the Sunnyvale, that like the other jurisdictions, they have similar agreements in place.
Thank you very much. Yeah, even I didn't know we had this.
Thank you, councilmember. Next up is councilmember Chang.
Thank you. In the Monday morning questions, we, there was a question that asked why the franchise fee was increasing by two hundred thirty percent. And it was noted, the benchmarking against the other cities. But are there any external factors that you might be aware of?
No, not necessarily. You know, I don't think that this is, like I said, it's not overly common to have these types of pipes in the ground, but at the same time, it's there, right, in certain areas? And so it wasn't as easy to find like a standard or anything like that related to it. So we just kind of relied on, you know, what we were able to find and what kind of made sense related to it. So I think it's, I don't think there's anything more that we could have found, really, at least at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And I asked this question Monday morning, but I kind of wanted to do a follow-up. How big the network is of these, of these lines within the city? They're, they're in the public right-of-way, correct?
That's correct, yeah. Mostly in roadways, essentially, is where they are mainly located.
And so my only question, you know, it's like, because part of the question was, how often are they updated? And I'm assuming they're monitored for leakage. That being said, have they been replaced? Do we know any of that over the last fifteen years or twenty years? Because it's the ongoing kind of up, you know, ripping up of city streets, patching, much like we did with PG&E and, you know, other, other cable entities that we have, you know, that have, that have had to deal with wiring. Here we have pipes, and most pipes in the city right now are city pipes of some sort other than PG&E and potential gas lines. I would assume that we would have a good understanding of the network and how much of the city streets are you being utilized from this standpoint?
Yeah, you know, you'd be surprised at how many things are actually in the public street, right? I mean, we have, you know, our water lines, we'll have sometimes cow water lines, and we'll have, you know, the wastewater lines, as well as, you know, sewer lines for stormwater, as well as AT&amp;T and Comcast will be in there too with various lines underground. And then sometimes things like this. So there's a, there's a fair number of these. And, and as far as the pipes themselves, I mean, some of these pipes can easily be, you know, fifty or more years as far as how they can, you know, their lifespan. And they're fairly straightforward and fairly simple. We don't track everything as far as, you know, whether they're replacing them. They're just responsible. So if there were any issues, then they would be responsible for that. They do still have to get an encroachment permit as far as when they're going to do the work. So they have to show their traffic control, and then they have to restore the roadway, you know, back to the way it was so we can inspect it and whatnot. So they still do those things. So there wouldn't really be a big concern, and we haven't had a major concern. It's, it's in a fairly limited area in the city, kind of in the north, you know, north and northeast area, and some in the northwest area for the most part. So it's not throughout the whole city, so it hasn't been any sort of major impact. And I don't expect that it will be, and they're not necessarily looking to expand any further at this point.
Okay. And, and so I was a little disheartened when we couldn't say exactly how many, how, how big the network was. Since they're paying per linear foot, we should have a very fixed value on that network. And conceivably, you know, if they're upgrading, are they expand, you know, are they expanding pipes, the pipe width? Are they expanding the network itself? So there's, you know, the franchise fee is very dependent upon those pipes within our, within our right-of-way. And so as opposed to, we do much different things for cable and other things. But here we're, here we're talking about width and length of pipes. So, you know, my, my, I felt, that's my only issue with this. I have no problem with the fee increase, especially in comparison to other cities. That being said, to me, it looks like there's missing information because whatever we're collecting on a yearly base basis, those two components is the critical portion of what we're collecting. And how we monitor, and how we monitor that as they, as they replace pipes or as they, you know, upgrade their system, making sure that, you know, diameters don't change. And our monitoring that becomes very important.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it's a valid point. I think we do, we actually do have a lot of that information in various spots. And so we're looking to bring all of that together to make sure it's more consistent. You know, since this agreement's been around for a long time, it really hasn't changed that much. They haven't, as far as we know, they haven't really expanded the network in any significant way. But you're right, we will make sure that we have at least as detailed inventory as we can so we can charge them correctly and ensure that we're just, you know, they're following the agreement at the end of the day. Adding new pipe would be easier for us to track. Replacing the existing is a little bit trickier. But I don't, I think it's a little bit more stable in the sense that they're not changing it dramatically. But you're right, we will, we will look to make sure we have the accurate data.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Yeah, adding to what Mayor said, what's the diameter of these pipes? Any idea?
They're, yeah, they're less than eight inches in general typically, and even smaller than that in some cases. So they can, they can, you know, come down, you know, more toward the six or four-inch range. So they're somewhere in that range for most of these.
Okay. And then the related question, are their customers in Sunnyvale or how does that work?
Yeah, there's definitely, that's, that's exactly what they are, right? Is they're serving the customer, they're serving various buildings and customers in Sunnyvale that use nitrogen in their manufacturing or packaging or something to that degree. So it's, it's a, it's a product that they need in order to do their business in Sunnyvale.
Yeah. I would imagine Canning Industry would have used that just as a preservative or something like that. I don't know.
Anyway, potential, potential, the network isn't necessarily reflect that exactly, but it could. I mean, it could have, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can make a comment. I think there's a couple of things that are controls on this. The first is they have to get encroachments if they want to expand their system. So if they wanted to expand or replace it and tear up the street, they'd have to get an encroachment permit with us, so we would catch it at that point. Just addressing sort of the inventory piece. Also, you know, traditionally, this revenue has been about forty thousand dollars a year or less. So it would cost us easily fifty to a hundred grand to do any sort of audit on pipe sizes, et cetera, for a net benefit that's probably not there. But also, these are, these are self-reporting, you know, industries that are pretty good about this kind of stuff. I don't, we don't have a lot of basis for, you know, there's not a lot of evidence that there would be fraud or anything like that or trying to expand the system significantly. I think just given the fact that you have to tear up streets to expand the system or increase the size is limiting in and of itself. That being said, you know, they, they do report to us, I believe, if I remember correctly, you know, they're, the basis for their payment. So we don't bill, this is kind of one of those ones where with franchise fees, we don't bill the company for the franchise fee. The franchise, the company remits the franchise fee to us based on their franchise agreement. To your point about other utilities, they're mostly revenue-based, right? We get a percent of, a percent of revenue. Things like PG&E's franchise fee, that's well worth our auditing, and we do do that. So just to offer a little clarity there. But I think given that this is getting a little bit bigger, it makes some sense to do some review on it as staff capacity becomes available.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public here, open up the public hearing on this item. Please submit a speaker card to the City Clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards in the room. City Clerk, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Vice Mayor Sal.
I move alternative one, introduce an ordinance awarding a fifteen-year extension to the existing non-exclusive franchise for the distribution of nitrogen gas by Air Products Manufacturing Corporation and Air Products and Chemicals Incorporated.
Thank you. Councilmember Chang?
Second.
To your motion.
So I think staff has done a good job of comparing this to other cities and weighing, not spending too much time and money on this, but also getting revenues from it. So it's a good balance. So I hope my colleagues support this motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Chang?
I'll just add nitrogen gas is used in a lot of the major, the manufacturing, major electronic companies in our area. So it's important that we, how they have the consistent delivery.
Thank you. I'll be in support of this motion, yeah, definitely. Looking at the R and D and manufacturing that's happening in the east side and the north part of our city. This is something that's viable. Thanks for staff for updating this franchise agreement and comparing it to comparable cities that, that, that were basically keying our, our franchise fee to. So I appreciate that work and look for any additional information that we get in the future. But I do, I do agree with the city manager. It is a limited amount at the end of the day and has only a certain amount of value from inventorying. So with that, and so happy to support the motion. With that, City Clerk, please conduct the voice vote.
First, let me read the ordinance title. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sunnyvale awarding a fifteen-year extension to an existing non-exclusive franchise for the distribution of nitrogen gas by Air Products Manufacturing Corporation and Air Products and Chemicals, Inc. And then for the voice vote, first up, councilmember Mellinger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Chang?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero with councilmembers Cisneros and Lee absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to item twenty-five dash zero-zero-four-five. Appoint applicant to the Human Relations Commission. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor and council. This is David Carnahan, the City Clerk. And somewhere in all these documents, there we go. Here is the staff presentation. There's currently one vacancy on the Human Relations Commission. Council interviewed six applicants back on November third, as well as four applicants earlier this year. And then there were two applicants that were not available to interview, but they do remain eligible for council to consider making an appointment. And then pursuant to council policy seven dot two dot one nine, boards and commissions, when one or more council members participate via teleconference, the appointment process is conducted by individual candidate roll call votes. I will announce the vacancy, its term, and then we'll read each applicant's name. Council will vote on the applicants. If one candidate receives at least four affirmative votes, and the most affirmative votes, they will be appointed. Should no candidate receive at least four affirmative votes, the vacancy would remain. In the event of a tie, council could vote again. Sometimes, though, council dealt with, in the event of a tie, there may be a motion to just appoint one of the individuals to break the tie. In the case where a tie cannot be resolved, the city attorney selects a name at random. This concludes the staff report, and I am ready to address questions from council and hear comments from council and the public.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council, of staff from council? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Please submit a speaker card to the City Clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards. City Clerk, are there any remote speakers wishing to speak on this item? Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards. City clerk, are there any remote speakers wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
I will go ahead and close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any further discussion or advocacy on any of the applicants. Councilmember Mellinger.
So this is a very challenging one for me because our cup runneth over. We have a number of really excellent candidates. What I'm going to say is I think that we would be very well served by appointing a student to this commission, especially given the input that we heard earlier this evening. I was very impressed with Joshua Charnota's work on anti-smoking. This is something that is, I think, very salient right now. I was very impressed by Neela's work with the Chamber of Commerce, and I was impressed by Aditya as well. I'm still not entirely sure how I'm going to vote on this, and I look forward to hearing from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Yeah, it's getting late, but I'll make it really quick. I also agree, I think we need to have youth perspective. That's very important. In fact, we had a high school student, he was for some time chair of Human Relations Commission. That was very, very useful. So I have worked with Neela, I, Joshua, Aditya, everybody. Yeah, it's a very, very good list. I don't know, once again, how it will turn out, but it's a good list. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sel.
I agree, it's a very strong list of candidates and I just, and Joshua and Aditya and Neela, they're all great. I very narrowly am going for the Neela because she has that combination of being a student. She also volunteered for the chamber, and so she kind of has that other kind of vision and experiences, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Chang.
Yeah, it's very difficult. We have so many great applicants and so many impressive students. I think it's important that we do support a young person onto the Human Relations Commission. I really liked Joshua and Neela. I, I'm leaning a little bit towards Joshua, just because he does a lot of student government work as well as at Fremont High.
Thank you. And I'll agree with my colleagues. I really like Neela, I really like Joshua. I also wanted to remind people, and so we do have one high school student on the HRC right now, from our last appointment process, is, I think that is correct? No? Pedro is, is supposed?
Pedro is a working adult.
Is, okay, I couldn't remember. Been a long time.
Sorry, Commissioner Valencia Landa.
Yes. And I also just wanted to add, so beyond Joshua and Neela, and actually several, and several others, I wanted to remind people about Pranjali, who's on the county HRC commission as well, so has experience there. But that's the advocacy that I have. City clerk, can you remind us how this process is going to go?
Yes, well, and something else I should have mentioned, for boarding commission appointments, council members typically vote yes or abstain on candidates. We have, we're going to do a roll call vote for each applicant, and we'll do them in last name alphabetical order, so starting with Joshua Charnota. And the random, it will be a random order of, for council votes for each of the applicants.
Just a moment. So the order that you gave us in the, in the packet was first name ordered?
Okay, give me a moment.
Fine with that, it's just I need to.
No, 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 we will, if you give.
And, and I'll, I'll ask council what they were ready for. It, did it matter?
First name ordered, just so that I can practice the list in the packet.
That was the sheet that I was following, sorry.
Mayor?
Yes.
Quick question for city clerk.
Yes.
Can you indicate who, who did not, you mentioned two applicants did not appear. I know their names, but then for public reference, can you mention who they are?
Yes, give me a moment.
I can, I can do that. Aiden, Aiden Ramasetti and Vidushi Prajag.
Okay.
It's on attachment number one from our packet. And that's how I did my voting.
I am looking at different.
Yes, understood.
Anyway.
And thank you, and thank you, city clerk, for, for linking to the interviews. It makes things a lot easier for council. Councilmember Shrinivasan? Do you have, are you ready for voting to start?
I am ready.
Okay, I just wanted to re.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem, just double checking. City clerk, are you?
I was trying to look for that page, it's like I didn't bring it here, so.
Okay. So, city clerk, are you ready? And, and just to remind us, it will be alphabetical from Aditin Ramasetti to Yunana Valencia, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, first up, for Human Relations Commission applicant, Aditri Ramasetti. Mayor Klein, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Abstain.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Abstain.
Councilmember Chang?
Abstain.
For applicant, Dithra Vishwanath, Vishwanath. Mayor Klein, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
Councilmember Chang?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Abstain.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Abstain.
For applicant, Betsy Giselle Ortega Flores. Councilmember Chang, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Abstain.
Mayor Klein?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Abstain.
For candidate, Heedan Chestenbaum, councilmember Shrinivasan, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Abstain.
Mayor Klein?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
Councilmember Chang?
Abstain.
For applicant Joshua Charnota, councilmember Mellinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Yes.
Councilmember Chang?
Yes.
For applicant, Manjula J. Rahman, Mayor Klein, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Councilmember Chang?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Abstain.
For applicant, Neera Rajkumar, Mayor Klein, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Chang?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Yes.
For applicant, Neely Helman Caspi, council, Vice Mayor Sel, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Councilmember Chang?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Abstain.
Mayor Klein?
Abstain.
For applicant, Ofrey Vaisman, councilmember Mellinger, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Mayor Klein?
Abstain.
Councilmember Chang?
Abstain.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Abstain.
For applicant, Anjali Dany, councilmember Shrinivasan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Abstain.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Chang?
Abstain.
For applicant, Vidushi Prajag, Vice Mayor Sel, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Mayor Klein?
Abstain.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Abstain.
Councilmember Chang?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
For applicant, Yuriya Valencia, councilmember Shrinivasan, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Abstain.
Councilmember Chang?
Abstain.
Mayor Klein?
Abstain.
Okay, Mayor, give me just a moment to input this, so I can display the results and share them with council and the public.
City clerk, sorry, me being remote, added to your work, sorry about that.
Sorry. Sure. We'll take a five-minute recess and return. Let's go ahead and reconvene. City clerk, can you show us the voting results?
Yes, Mayor and council, I hear are the results for your boarding commission appointments. You have two applicants that received five votes, which is more than the minimum of four required. Applicant Joshua Charnota and applicant Neela Rajkumar both received five votes. You do have one vacancy, so you have a couple of options. You could vote again, or you have an opportunity if one of you would like to make a motion to appoint one of these individuals to the vacancy.
Thank you, and I don't think it's truly valuable to vote again. I would almost prefer a motion. But councilmember Mellinger, I'll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am ready with a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we appoint Joshua Charnota to the Human Relations Commission.
Vice Mayor Sel?
A second?
To your motion?
This came down to two absolutely excellent candidates, and this is a, and I am regrettably being forced to choose on the narrowest of margins. What I will say is that what gives the edge to Joshua in my book is that he is a student at Fremont High School. I have heard consistent equity concerns since before I was in office about Fremont High School. And I think having a, a student from that high school on our Human Relations Commission would be particularly valuable. Again, we have a number of excellent candidates, and it is very sad to me that we can only choose one. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sel?
And I guess I, moving towards Joshua, because thinking back on his interview, I was really impressed with all the aspects of where he's volunteered. Since he was a little child, he's volunteered, he volunteered a thousand hours, and he's in leadership in student government. So he has a really interesting background, and he has a very far reach. So he'll get outward about our Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up is councilmember Shrinivasan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as councilmember Mellinger said, both are excellent candidates. I totally agree with a. I totally agree with a representation from Fremont High School. But having said that, I work very, very closely with Neela. I find her to be amazing. Unfortunately, we have to choose. I'm abstaining from this motion for that purpose. Sorry.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. If Councilmember Srini Vasan abstains, then his vote will not be counted towards the outcome of the motion. And I'm just raising that. It's certainly his right to abstain, but that that could produce an effect. Thank you.
Yes, understood. Thank you.
Oh, point of order?
Yes, go ahead.
For this motion, we vote yes or no, not abstain? Is that the?
You can abstain, but it's normally yes or no.
Okay, okay, got it. Thanks.
Understood. I under, yeah, the question of abstention, abstention for a motion is a slightly different sort of thing. So it's basically a no vote, or it's it's reducing the number of quorum, or what the, what the, sorry, it's been a lot, it's been a long day.
Yeah, yeah.
With the maximum number. Okay. I will support the motion. I agree with Councilmember Srini Vasan. To some degree, I do think Neela has certain aspects that that I would also like to see. That being said, I appreciate Councilmember Mellinger's pointing out the high school that that Joshua is going to. I do think that that is important, especially from some of the operations and things that we've been seeing. So from that matter, I will support his motion. But yeah, I definitely, it was a toss up between two very good candidates. So with that, City Clerk, can you please conduct the voice vote?
First up, Mayor Klein, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sel?
Yes.
Councilmember Srini Vasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Chang?
Yes.
The motion to appoint Joshua Charnota to the Human Relations Commission for the term ending on June 30, 2026, carries five zero with Councilmembers Sisneros and Lay absent.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sel?
I'd like to move to continue item number seven to a date uncertain, because of the length of this meeting so far has been very long.
Thank you, and I will second that motion.
Yeah.
And to your motion, do you have any comments? I have a, I just have a quick comment. Thanks for everyone. It's been a long evening, and I appreciate, you know, I think we need to be a little bit clearer, looking at policy and when we, when we look at it at a future meeting. So I do think it has value. It definitely has value, but I do think that our questions and our cognition at this late date need a little more awake time. So anyway, City Clerk, can you please conduct the vote?
First up, Vice Mayor Sel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Srini Vasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Chang?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
The motion to continue item seven to a date uncertain carries five zero with Councilmembers Sisneros and Lay absent.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to Councilmember Reports on Activities from Intergovernmental Committee Assignments. Are there any? Seeing none. Are there any non-agenda items and comments, council? I see. Oh, Councilmember Chang?
I just wanted to wish Mayor Klein and Vice Mayor Sel happy belated birthday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should we sing?
After, after we adjourn the meeting, maybe. We don't want to hear, we don't want to catch that on video. And I just want to say, I look forward to seeing the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Srini Vasan in Salt Lake City for the US, the US Conference, the National League of Cities going forward. Councilmember Mellinger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a proposal for the ideas list. We received an email this weekend from a resident regarding the issue of smoke shops. This is something that I've found very concerning. And so something that I will be putting on the idea list for consideration at the February workshop. And if the city manager wants to comment on this, by all means, would be, you know, restricting the develop, restricting the establishment of new smoke shops, as well as restricting the sale of certain substances within those smoke shops.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we do not need a second for this. This is just an idea list.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Thank you.
Correct.
City Manager?
We do need cosponsors, though.
Do we?
We do.
Hang on.
Yeah, you do need a quorum.
That's right. Yes. So I'm happy to cosponsor that. Vice Mayor Sel?
Cosponsor.
Cosponsor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cosponsor, cosponsor.
That's fine. Thank you, Councilmember Srini Vasan. City Manager, do you have any non-agenda items and comments?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
With that, the meeting is adjourned at 11:26 PM. Thanks for everyone who participated this evening. Have a good night.
See you tomorrow.